Hello, everyone, and welcome to the joint meeting of the Select Board and the Finance Committee at April 25th. Please join me for the legislative meeting.
President-elect of the United States of America, the country's republic, which stands one nation, undergone indiscernible liberty and justice for all.
Just to let everybody know, this meeting is being recorded and broadcast on Decat. You can watch it upon demand on Decat's website. I'm going to introduce the board of introductions to chair we have a forum. I'm Robyn Corrigan.
I'm Craig Barger.
I'm Mark Lamb.
I'm Jen Stacey.
I'm Jamie Steppens.
Before we get started, congratulate Jen and Jamie for their reelection. So, thank you for agreeing to serve here. We also have Town Administrator Connery and Assistant Town Administrator Sean Dugan. And do you want to open your meeting at the same time?
Let's open our meeting. Let's do exactly the same thing. Patrick Bellamy.
Sherry Ian.
Christina Janabala.
Brian DiNardo.
Chris Persio.
Jay Olson.
So, we had a great first night last night with lots of amazing presentations. This is a really great fun time of year for us because we get to hear all the exciting things that our departments have done. So, a very enjoyable night. We're looking forward to that again tonight. And Craig is going to read the public notice, and then we're going to get right into it.
Show it to Article 6, Section 6, C6-5 of the Easton Town Code. The Eastern Select Board will hold a joint public hearing with the Eastern Finance Committee in Frohlingham Hall, 15 Barrel Street, Easton, Mass. on April 24th and tonight, April 25th, 2024 at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of the hearing is to hear presentations from town departments on their proposed fiscal year 2025 budget requests.
All right. So, the first item on your agenda is a town clerk. Long up in there.
Hi. Good evening. How are you?
Great. How are you?
Good. For those who don't know me, my name is Denial Sakard. I'm a town clerk. I've been a town clerk since 2010 and in Easton since 2017. I am certified through the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. I have a designation of NMC, which is Master Municipal Clerk. And once a year, I get to see that. So, it's nice to get some recognition for being a master of something. And in Massachusetts, I have my CMC. So, the town clerk's office, we generally like to lump it into five categories, especially when I do Citizens Academy. It's the easiest way to kind of explain some of the things that we do in the office. First and foremost is elections and town meetings. As you know, this year is a significant year of a lot of elections that we have. Our office is going to be working really hard. We've already accomplished two of them. We have two more to go. It's the most significant factor that actually makes changes to our budget every year in the town clerk's budget. We also do vital records. We're in charge of the deaths, the births, the marriages. We get to see in the residents some of their happiest times in their lives here and some of their saddest times, too, with our vital records. And we're also the Records Access Officer. So, we're in charge of fielding, responding, and recording public records requests for the town. And the keeper of the records. So, we're in charge of archival management of records and public body administration of compliance, things like open meeting law and state ethics documents. We post agendas, minutes, and public hearings, and we handle some licensing such as dog licensing and business certificates, yard sale permits, raffle permits, underground fuel storage registrations, just to name a few of them. In my office, we have three full-time employees, myself, the Assistant Town Clerk, and the Records Manager. And we have one part-time employee who works 21 hours a week for us, except during election cycles where she works 35 hours a week at that time. We have three or four senior tax workers that help us accomplish our jobs in the office, and that gives us another 375 to 500 hours of additional support with filing and other things that the office needs some help with. Some of the challenges that we are facing basically is the changes that happen to election laws and kind of managing such a robust vote-by-mail and all of the options that we have, which are wonderful options for voters, while we're still actually trying to manage all of the other things that I just mentioned in regards to the office. And as I said, this is a really busy year. Elections start now with vote-by-mail about eight weeks beforehand in an intense vote-by-mail process. And so, this year, looking at the calendar year, we're basically running elections all but 18 weeks out of the 52 weeks for the year. So, I'm really proud of my team, the work that they have done. Really couldn't do it without them. They really have stepped up. Even with the new Assistant Town Clerk, it's pretty been seamless for us in the office. And I also want to do a shout-out to the election workers. They have been amazing, both on Election Day and for our advanced mailing house that starts those eight weeks in advance in putting together all these packets. If we didn't have all of them coming in, and a fun fact around that is we are using the food pantry down in the basement as our advanced mailing house, which has worked out really nice. They don't love it as much in the basement, but it gives us an opportunity in the space to not interfere with the work that you guys are doing in the calling Corona Room for that many weeks. So, moving on to my budget, some notable changes from the FY25 budget from the '24 budget. As I mentioned, elections is going to be where you're going to see the biggest change in my budget. And so, in FY24, that budget shows for two budgeted elections, and one of those had one week of early voting in person, whereas the FY25 budget will have three elections and three weeks of early voting in person. So, you'll see a significant change over in things such as poll workers, overtime, that type of thing. So, without going through every single line, the ones that do have significant increases, salaries would be one of those, and basically that's contractual obligations. But also, as I mentioned, the part-time clerk will increase her hours for the state primary and for the presidential election. Overtime obviously is based on the number of elections that we have and the amount of time that we're spending more hours there. Poll workers, we are increasing from $15 an hour. The budget has from $15 an hour to $16.25, which has been pretty much what we've been doing, whatever the new minimum wages in January, we've been kicking in for the next fiscal year. So, staying with that same process, it would be going from 15 to 16.25. Training went up slightly. I am giving opportunities to all of our staff to go to additional trainings, and there's been some increases in some of the meals for these trainings and some of the registration fees. I think that pretty much most of the other ones, besides the street listing, which was up by $740, that one's basically just increased costs for mailing the census that's required on an annual basis. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Start on the second. Anything on the Finance Committee for questions for today? Back to you guys.
Start down with you, Jamie.
Thanks, Danielle.
No questions. I just want to commend your team. Every time I go into town hall during business hours, they're so friendly, very helpful. So, just wanted to say that.
I'll pass that along. Thank you.
No questions. Thank you.
I'll echo what Jen said.
I'm just looking at the table of the key performance measures in our budget document and the number of, you know, quantity of the work, the licenses and all things like that. They're pretty impressive. So, you do a lot with a small staff, and we appreciate the great work. And I also commend you for calling out the election workers. I always try to say thank you to them when I'm there that day because they do. They work very hard and they really care about the work. So...
They may not be on the front line that you see in my office every day, but they really are doing tremendous work for us, and we couldn't do it without them. So, thank you.
Well, thank you for everything that you're doing and your staff. All right. Next up, Robbie Alfred.
The Assessor's Budget for Finance Committee and Select Board is page 42 of your line item detail.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Robbie Alfred. I'm a chief assessor. I've been, I'm just shy of 16 years in Easton. A couple of weeks ago, I just celebrated 30 years in assessing. I don't know how that's possible since I'm only 25. So... But seen a lot of changes over the years. The Assessor's Office, we set the value for every parcel in town. The $70 million that gets collected from the tax levy, that's from our office. We are responsible for chapter land, applications, reviewing. The betterments, we do the tax bills. So, the betterments, the liens. We have, it's myself, the Assistant Assessor, which just started in February. Yay. We were four months without somebody, which when there's only three of us, it makes it a little difficult. We have an office assistant, been there for three years, and we have three to four tax work-off people, which really do a good job. One, she does her hours and she just continues. So, that's nice because having someone that comes every year that knows what they're doing and we don't have to train them, that's even better. This year, we have the revaluation. Every five years in Massachusetts, we have to do a revaluation. In the last few years, this year, we've stepped up inspections in town, trying to catch up from COVID. In the rotating door, we've had retirements, and during COVID, we lost a person. So, we've been playing catch-up for the last few years. The budget. As far as most of the salaries, that's all contractual. We did increase overtime. The assistant now takes the minutes for us, which is great. Before, I was taking the minutes and they were typing it up, but now the assistant does it. And the other big increase is the data processing. And like Connor has said in many of the letters, everything has gone up. Our appraisal software went up about $2,000 in the last year. We have NearMap, which is great. We just did 900 vacant land inspections by using NearMap, which took about... Well, because we're doing it in the office and doing other things, it took two or three days. It probably would have taken two weeks if we had to go out and drive to every house. Robbie, what is NearMap? NearMap, well, it's like GIS. But NearMap, actually, they do flyovers at least twice a year. Some communities, it's three times a year. So, you're able to see. So, if people aren't home, this sounds bad, but we're able to still see. We're able to see the outbuildings. We're even able to actually measure some of the homes. So, if we're not able to do an inspection, we can still, we can use NearMap to be able to do that. Right now, the last three years, the DOR and the Appellate Tax Board basically has made the 504s, which is electric and gas, personal property. It's a split valuation. It's 50% book value and 50% appraisal. So, we've had to hire an appraisal to do the three or four properties that we have for personal property. They've gone up. The vendors have all gone up, just like everything else. So, that's the increase of the 5200 in the data processing. Everything else has basically stayed the same. Training, we've been very fortunate. We've been able to connect with scholarships for classes and stuff. I am currently on the Executive Board for the MAAO. So, we've been able to use their scholarships and the Bristol County Assessors Association, their scholarships as well. And I've been active with Bristol County Assessors for trainings. In fact, we're going to have a training in Easton on the 16th of May. And most of those are no cost. So, we're able to get our credits and education, and it doesn't cost us anymore. I went through my notes, so I think I hit everything. If anyone has any questions?
Anything on the Finance Committee side?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good night. Now, we have the Eastern Public Schools.
It's page 117 in your line item.
Good evening. Thank you for having us.
Welcome.
Thank you. I am Dr. Alicia Cabral. I'm the very proud superintendent of the Eastern Public Schools. And joining me...
Is Andrea Starjewski, the Director of Finance for Eastern Public Schools.
And we are happy to present our budget this evening. Before I get started, I just wanted to give context of the school department. Some people, many people often ask, "How many students do you have in the district? How big is it?" We are definitely a medium-sized, medium-to-larger-sized district in the state of Massachusetts. We have over 3,450 students. We have over 600 employees. Our students are ages three to 22. And we have many different programs within and around our district and many different community partnerships and partnerships with colleges and universities and pre-employment services. As far as our employees, we have, as I said, over 600 employees, but we're kind of a micro system. We have a lot of many different diverse professionals working in our department. We have, of course, administrators in everything from finance to special education and learning disabilities. We have teachers, everything from teachers of foreign language to teachers of multilingual learners and special education teachers and content area teachers and reading specialists. But we also have, which keep us running in many different ways, but most people think of teachers and administrators when they think of schools. We also, of course, have our nurses, our school adjustment counselors, our psychologists, our behavior specialists, our behavior techs, our paraprofessionals. We have occupational therapists. We have physical therapists, speech therapists, custodians, maintenance, including our seasonal maintenance in the summer that joins us, secretarial staff, clerical staff, coaches, advisors, food service, technology, lunch playground aides, crossing guards, interventionists, guidance counselors, many outside contractors and organizations, drivers, hall monitors, and an SRO. So, we're kind of our own small city within a city. We have it all. And so, this budget is to support all of them and our thousands of children that we serve every day. The first thing I would like to just remind the community of is our process in the Eastern Public Schools for coming up with our budget. It's very participatory. I just named a very diverse set of professionals, and we tap into every single one of them when we're doing our budget. We use the same process every year. It starts around December. Of course, Andrea and I are talking about budget with Connor and Wendy well before that. But in December, we begin our staff input cycle. It begins with a revisit of our strategic plan, which is on our website. Important to note, our strategic plan is, our five-year strategic plan is coming to an end this year. We've been in about a year-long process coming up with a new strategic plan, which will be launched at the end of this summer. So, in December, this year, it was January, February, instead of December, January, the administrators in each school take two months, two staff meetings, and they spend that time with all of these professionals, talking about the strategic plan, any gaps in the strategic plan, any gaps in achievement, and things that they need to close in the next fiscal year. And then, they talk about the resources, the personnel, what they're going to need to make those changes, to help the students the best that they can. What do they need? What are they lacking? So, for two months, the principals go over the strategic plan, the priorities, and they list what it is that they need. They spend the second month coming up as a team. They all come together. At the high school, for example, all of the departments then come together. At elementary schools, all of the grades come together. And as a school, they decide what is really the priority for them. They know that it ebbs and flows. They know that some things are very timely and necessary for our students and to serve their needs immediately. And so, they come together. They present with their principal. They come up with their list of priorities. The principals then come to our full cabinet, which is all of the building administrators as well as central administrators. And each of our four principals of our very large schools then presents their staff's priority list. We do that very purposefully because even though each of them is in their own school and is in charge and expert of their own school, we feel that it's very important that they understand where they fit in the bigger budget. And so, all of the principals present to one another. They understand the priorities and the needs. And the executive team, which is made up of the central administrative staff, then takes all of those proposals. We work as a district to consider what are the regulations, what are the mandates that are coming, what are things that might be falling behind, things that we need to, what are different laws that are taking effect, what is coming from the Department of Education as requirements that's coming that we need to be prepared for. And we then prioritize what each of the schools has brought forward. That happens in February, March. And then, you can see in March, we present that back in the cabinet to the cabinet. We fine-tune that with input from the entire team, and then they have all of that information to go back and present to their staff. Starting in the end of March and up until May, we have all of our public presentations, including our school committee budget hearing, this hearing, and of course, town meeting. So, that is the process we use every year. In order to direct all of those people to do all of that work, we use our budget targets. So, we have three main budget targets in the Eastern Public Schools: reactive and essential, proactive and strategic. This is so that when they come up with their list of needs and priorities in order to serve the students, they then use these definitions to categorize them. Are they reactive or essential? That would mean that we're providing the staff only the resources and staffing that they need to head off a current need or a mandate or something that either has been cited or they know isn't meeting the minimum requirements of service for children. So, it is reactive. We're reacting to something that's already falling behind. Proactive is when we are preparing for something that's imminent. We know that something's coming. It's a developing need. It's a mandate. Perhaps it's currently in legislation. Lack of preparing proactive needs obviously results in reactive needs if they aren't ultimately met. An example of that would be the legislature is considering a requirement that every student in high school needs to study computer science before they graduate. Right now, we currently have one computer science teacher at OA. So, proactively, we would need to incrementally add that staff to our budget because we would never be able to add it all in one year. But it's not a mandate that we're not meeting right now, so it's not reactive. Strategic is planning for challenging and evolving needs of the future, looking ahead. Unfortunately, a lot of people had said, "Well, that's kind of pie in the sky. We don't need to be crazy here with things." But that's why I added the caveat that it is actually programs in things that are happening in other districts, including our neighbor districts, that we know we need, but it's really far off in our budget process, that we can't really prepare for that yet financially. An example of that would be foreign languages in elementary school. We know that in our global society, it is very important for our children to learn foreign languages at a younger age. We're just not at the point where we can even start planning for that. That is more strategic for us. Because of that belief from people, I added the category innovative because I didn't want people to think that our staff weren't capable of coming up with really the most, the highest cutting-edge, state-of-the-art opportunities and programming for our kids. We have highly trained professionals who are very passionate about what they're doing, and they have the most amazing ideas and dreams for our kids. But that would be innovative, and that is actually beyond strategic in our budget targets. The only reason I added regressive is because several years ago, unfortunately, we were in a very difficult fiscal year, and we weren't even able to get by on a reactive budget. It actually was regressive, which resulted in several layoffs in the district. We lost some programs. We eliminated staff. We eliminated resources, and it did set us back. Fortunately, we've only had one of those years in the 11 that I've been here. However, since I have been here, we have always been in reactive, otherwise. So, we're constantly reacting to things that are coming down the pike, that we need to hurry up and fix before we... It's very counterintuitive, but if you don't meet federal and state guidelines, the consequence for that is a loss of funding. Doesn't really make sense. You don't have funding for something, and so, they're going to give you a consequence of less funding. But that is the structure that the government uses. So, we are constantly trying to stay ahead of that. Last year, we were at what I would have considered the higher end of reactive. We weren't able to suit all our needs, but we were able to get quite a few positions that were able to satisfy some of the demographics that we have, including a greatly increased pre-K population. If you build it, they will come, and they did. And we're very happy about that. But we had to create new sections of pre-K and kindergarten. This year, we are at what I would consider the very lowest reactive. We really aren't adding anything. It's complete level service. Even the positions here are very fluid, and they're not even finalized yet. For example, we don't yet know exactly how many pre-K students we're going to get. If you're a brand-new parent, as an example, and you don't have any children in school, you really don't think about signing them up for pre-K or kindergarten until sometime in the summer. We advertise widely. We have done that. We had sign-ups in March. We have already more students signed up than we ever have in Easton. About 40% more than ever. And that's before we even know who else is going to sign up. So, that's always something very mercurial, and we have to be really nimble with not... Of course, we never want to put more in our budget than we need, but then you come to school in September and you find you need another classroom. Another classroom for early learners is a teacher and a paraprofessional. And so, that can get costly. So, we've had to be very creative in how we are nimble there, and I'll explain some of those things. First of all, I wanted to tell you about some of the budget influencers for next year. They're very, they're very common in the Commonwealth right now. You may have heard in the news about some massive layoffs in other districts. They have followed the same trajectory that we have. I certainly would never suggest that they haven't been as creative, but I am very proud to say that I think we, or I'm confident, we've gotten as far as we have so far on the absolute, absolutely dedicated staff of hard-working individuals that we have that go really above and beyond every day, but also the management of our budget, including all of our grants, our revolving accounts, and any other revenue sources that we have. But here are some of the things you may be hearing about even in the news that are creating a real perfect storm for school districts right now. First of all, increased elementary enrollment. There was, there is a little population, boom, after COVID. Those children are about school age now, and that is creating the need for more staff, which is a good thing, but it is a driver of our budget. Of course, contractual salary obligations, increased out-of-district costs. We have created in-district special education programs for several of our students. That means, in the past, there were students that we were not able to educate in the Eastern Public Schools. We just didn't have the specialized staff or the resources to do that. We have built up that staff. It's critical for the children. We want them to be in their hometown with their friends, with their neighbors. We don't want them to be shipped to another school every day. But there are still some students that are either too medically fragile or too complex for us to educate in Easton. Those students are what falls under out-of-district expenses. Some are day tuitions. Some are residential. And those tuitions can go anywhere from $30,000 a year for a day student to over $250,000 a year for a, for one student in one specialized program. Again, we will never know when a student will move into Easton and require services or when a child will start to need services. And so, you can see that that can be quite a swing in our budget. And so you can see that that can be quite a swing in our budget. With that said, last year, we had an unprecedented increase in out of district tradi- uh, tuitions. The, um, last decade or so, I think, uh, the tuitions have only gone up an average of two percent. Last year, with very minimal warning, the out of district tuition costs, which are over, which are multi-million dollars in our district, went up by fourteen percent. This year, they're going up by almost five percent. So in two years, multi-million sections of our budget have gone up nineteen percent. Uh, we have no control over that. We're legally mandated to meet those tuition costs. Minimum aid reduction. This is, if you're not what's called a foundation district, which Easton is not, we receive minimum aid. So every year, the, um, the chapter seventy funding is thirty dollars per student. In Easton, that's about a hundred and five thousand dollars a year. So to meet our cost increases every year, we receive one hundred and five thousand dollars on a forty, this year, about forty-nine million dollar budget. Last year, it was sixty dollars per student. At the beginning of this year, it had been cut back to thirty dollars per student. Now, the, the most recent iteration of the budget, it's been suggested that it goes to one hundred and four dollars a student. That would be extremely helpful. We're actually have that baked into our budget. We're hoping it goes through that way. Otherwise, that will be quite a swing for us. We have administrative obligations regarding discipline law changes. Um, there is a law, two-two-two, which requires a great deal more, um, paperwork, reporting, submitting reports, reporting to DESI, reporting to the Office of Civil Rights, and it has created a need for, uh, more hours. McKinney-Vento and DCF increases. McKinney-Vento is transportation. Uh, I realize I skipped transportation, but these go together. Our overall transportation costs are, went up in one year ten point seven percent. Again, we have one transportation provider. We generally get one bid for transportation whenever we go out for bidding and it went up ten point seven percent. We have to transport our children to school. McKinney-Vento is the regulation, um, around homeless children. We are legally required, wherever the children are placed, to transport them to school. It could be as far away as Fairhaven or Situate or Duxbury. Um, and so that is several hundred thousand dollars a year. Again, we never know when a child will be put in that unfortunate situation. And so it's a very difficult thing to plan for. DCF is the same idea, but for students who are in DCF custody. Student support increases. Um, we have had a, a spike in our use, particularly of vaping products. We are trying to mitigate that for our students. We know that's a very significant, um, health threat to them. Lack of staff for Medicaid optional reporting. There are some services that some of our clinicians provide that are actually eligible for Medicaid reimbursement, but we don't have enough staff to do the time records, to get the full realization of that funding. And grant reductions, which I'm going to talk about on the next page. So you can see all these cost drivers at the same time as grant reductions that lends itself to that perfect storm. So here are several grants for the last three years. I would just draw your attention to our Title I grant. This is for, uh, interventionists, which is a position that we had prior to COVID, but we found were really, uh, extremely effective in meeting students and honing in on conceptual understandings and skills to get them back up to speed after what they had lost and filled those gaps after COVID. That grant has steadily increased, as you can see. Every other grant, when that grant has increased, has also increased, except for the one right under it, Title II for professional development, that went down slightly last year. In FY twenty-five, we would just notified that that Title I grant is being cut by fifty-two percent. Again, as it has gone up, the other grants have gone up. We don't find out about those other grants, uh, some of them not until the end of August. So we're trying to plan our budget without knowing where those grants are and where they're going to be for some very important, um, needs in the district, like our critical paraprofessionals, like our materials, our staff professional development. And so this is also a, a great unknown for us right now. I am going to throw in, um, our capital request only because it has an effect on our operating budget. And the reason for that is we are very, very committed to upgrading the security in every school building, obviously other than Blanch Ames, which was just recently done, as soon as possible. And we've been working very closely with the town who's just as committed. In order to do that, we have, we are foregoing our capital requests of anything, facilities related or otherwise, for the next three years, if we can, which is our goal, to only request security and technology. That means those have to be absorbed in our operating budget. When something goes wrong or something happens, we're going to be able, we're, we're not going to be able to be as proactive or even proactive. We're going to have to be reactive with our facilities requests as well, which, um, you know, if you own a house, it can get much more costly when you operate that way. That's how we're getting through the budget. So technology, we were thrust into that during COVID. The federal government was able to provide us with all the devices for our students and then they're done. So we now have to have a procurement plan where these devices every, we do it every six years, which I think Town Hall does it even less than that. That's not the best practice, but we do it. We have stretched it out for six years and I just want to remind you who's using these devices. We have adults using devices and you think about a procurement plan maybe in your office or even in your home. We have handheld devices, Chromebooks primarily, and these students, take them home. They go in their backpacks, they go on the bus, they go to hockey practice, they go home, they go under the bed, wherever they go. They come back, they get used very frequently without supervision, not like the days where they went to a computer lab and had a teacher wa- watching them and then they stayed there safely. So six years as a procurement plan, I have to emphasize how long that is for us. And we buy the least expensive Chromebooks that are still able to run MCAS. So our technology staff is very skilled at, um, piecing together these Frankenstein parts to keep everything going and we're very fortunate for that. So that reduces our facilities, uh, our capital requests for the next three years and you can see what impact that has on the operating budget. So our FY twenty-four budget was forty-seven thousand, excuse me, forty-seven million, twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars. When we did the exercise of a staff rollover, just our contractual increases, it came out to four point nine seven. When we add just essential staff, which is completely level service, it's not even half of a percent, that brought us to five point four-three percent. Then we added in the expenses of our operational contracts, transportation, out of district, energy, everything else it takes to run a district, it was eight point oh-seven percent. I'm sure you can imagine how you would have felt this evening if I brought you an eight plus percent budget. So we had to sort of value engineer that. In order to do that, we put more people into grants. We are able to do that right now, but I want to be extremely clear, as I have tried to be for several years. That is not an optimal practice. Grants are very mercurial, revolving accounts are finite. We do not have a lot of money going into them. This will keep us going for a very short time. We are fortunate that we have no layoffs in the Easton Public Schools this year, but I don't want anyone to believe that that is because we're doing very well. We are leveraging every resource we have. For example, we put more interventionists, those critical roles I told you about in backfilling skills, into the ARPA grant, which is expiring. We've frozen positions for one year. Now freezing is not a layoff. Freezing simply means one of our, for example, a special education program that we have had students in it this year, it won't have students in it next year. But it may the year after. And so we would have to fill that position again, but we can get away with it for one year. That's what I mean by a frozen position. Those people have not been laid off, they've been reallocated in the district. The potential graduation of out of district students, I told you that we pay their tuitions. We have students that are on a trajectory to graduate next year. We could save their tuitions if they continue the trajectory. Again, it's if, that is baked into our budget. That is how we're bringing you our budget today, is making those contingencies. We are hoping to have two hundred thousand dollars left at the end of the fiscal year. If we do, we have baked that into our budget. We have added paraprofessionals, more paraprofessionals to a grant. We have tried to negotiate with our special education transportation vendor and were able to realize a small savings there. And we were able to work with the town administrator to come up with some ARPA grant funding for some of our curriculum materials. That is a total of two point two-eight percent. When we take that and subtract it from our eight percent, we had five point seven-eight. And then just this week, um, Wendy Nightingale was able to work with Andrea and they were able to realize another one hundred thousand dollars in utilities savings. Now that we've been in Blanch Ames for a full year, they had some longitudinal data they could use to make projections for next year. Granted, we had a very mild winter, different things can happen, but that's the data that we're using for that figure. That brings us down to five point five-seven percent and that is our request for FY twenty-five. I just want to keep in mind, uh, the future impact. Um, I, I've tried to make that clear. I'm going to also talk about how we're leveraging our revolving accounts because those are also finite. We have a special education revolving account. It has seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars in it. However, we have two full-time employees in there. Excuse me. If we have to add pre-K sections this year, just one section would be a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars because pre-K, the littles, three years old, they have a teacher and two paraprofessionals. Uh, you can see, quick mental math, how quickly that line is going to go away. Kindergarten, we have two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars in it. We do not collect tuition anymore. We have free universal kindergarten in Easton, so no more money is going into that. There, if we need a K section, that will be ninety-five thousand dollars a year. We will not know that until closer to September. Athletics, four hundred and seventeen thousand. Transportation, athletic, uh, athletics, software and sporting goods come out of that line. But we have also made a goal to try to, um, we, we made a pledge to the town that we would make a goal to try to fund the next iteration, whatever that is, of the Moscato Field. That is going to be, um, somewhere between twenty twenty-nine and twenty thirty-four. That's anticipated to be at least a million dollars. That's really without escalating costs to that time because I, I don't have that capacity. But we currently have four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in there and that's with those recurring costs. Our facilities is four hundred and three thousand dollars. That is going to be extra taxed this year because we're, as I said, trying to go three years without any capital requests for facilities. And our school lunch program is three hundred and ninety-nine thousand. We have seven and a half full-time employees coming out of that and our capital improvements for just the kitchens comes out of that. To give you a context, in FY twenty-three, we spent a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars on appliances. We do have, um, free lunch and, uh, breakfast right now. However, that regulation states if appropriation is available. As you know, the state is, um, the state and the federal government are talking about some very serious deficits. We do not find out if the program continues for sure until August. So last summer, we did an exercise with our food vendor and they estimated that if we did not have free lunch and breakfast this year, we would have had a one hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit. So next year, in any year going forward, if we have one year without the free program because appropriation is not available, that will be a two hundred thousand deficit minimum with an escalation of costs and we currently have three hundred and ninety-nine thousand in there. There's always money coming in and going out, but it cannot absorb multiple years at a deficit of two hundred thousand dollars. So that's a total of two point two million dollars. When you add what we already had put into grants, because we had already put people in grants for the last several years slowly to try to extend this as long as possible, it comes out to approximately two million dollars, which of, is four point four percent of this year's budget. That means that next year, if we are unable to slowly move any of those into operating or we have any other, um, costs that we weren't anticipating or any of our anticipating costs aren't reduced, we could be starting next year with a four point four percent need before we even do our initial staff rollover or anything else in this exercise. I just want to provide one last piece of context that I have showed several times, but just so people, um, understand just how stellar your staff in your schools are with your children. DART is the comparison that the Department of Education uses to compare Easton to other districts for academic achievement. So these are the schools that the Department of Ed has chosen. You can see that Easton's per pupil expenditure or the money we have available to spend on students is sixteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars per student. The state average is twenty thousand, one hundred and thirty-three. You can see the highest in our comparison districts is Tewksbury at over twenty thousand dollars as well. These are the districts that our students are compared against and we outscore the state and these other districts every year. Our administrators, all these professionals, all of these staff members, put their heart and soul into what they're doing every day and they're making the most out of what they can with this amount of funding. Obviously, we cannot pay these people less than our surrounding districts. So an inordinate amount of our budget goes to paying the same salaries that everybody else is paying around us. That leaves very little for anything other than, as I said, reactive needs. The other comparison I'd like to use is our bordering neighbors. If you look at our bordering neighbors, we're second to last. Again, sixteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars. The state you can see is twenty thousand, Brockton up at almost twenty-one thousand dollars. If we were to be receiving the same amount of money as our neighbor who is making the next amount, we would be receiving an additional five point six million dollars a year in the Easton Public Schools alone. If we made the same as the state average, which we never compare ourselves to the state in any of our academic, extracurricular or any other metricies, we would be getting an extra twelve million dollars a year. So we are performing at or above our neighbors in our DART comparison districts with this much less resources. Um, this isn't a, a pity story. I just really need to highlight the work that the professionals are doing for you every day and give them a really strong shout out on that. So this is a revenue issue. This is not a spending issue because we have done probably more audits than anybody I've ever heard of and they all come to the same conclusion, the same conclusion they come to of the town. And that is that we're all running very lean. It's a revenue issue and so we've been working on trying to mitigate these issues for many years, whether we're petitioning our legislators for a higher minimum aid, whether we are trying to change our, um, labor market so that our wage adjustment factor gets changed. We have been really try- I want you to be confident that we've tried to exhaust every possible resource to meet with our delegation, to meet with, um, our community partners, to meet with our partners at the town level for how we can stimulate, um, how we can stimulate funds in town. People always say, why, you're at a sewer meeting, you're a superintendent, why are you here? It's all related and we all know that we're all part of the same fiscal family. It's all related, and we all know that we're all part of the same fiscal family. And so we are really trying to change that trajectory for our kids, for your kids, and for the town. So we really appreciate your support, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Just one, a couple of questions. On the PK, because I see that special education is like your highest percentage increase. You use the number of 40% increase from last year?
Students.
Students. What's the number? Can you just give me, I'm not good with percentages.
You know, I didn't bring it, but I didn't bring it. But I think we have already over 130 students or 125 students signed up for pre-K.
For pre-K.
And we, years ago, have had like 70. And pre-K is particularly, you didn't ask this, I'm sorry, but pre-K is particularly difficult, because our pre-kindergarten program is an aging program. That means that unlike kindergarten or any other grade, you come in in September and you're in for the year. Pre-kindergarten students are eligible for pre-kindergarten when they are three years old, whether that's in September, or whether that's in February, or whether that's in May. So again, if they've never been affiliated with the public schools, they don't have an older sibling, we don't even know these little ones exist. And so when they show up a month before their birthday, we have to be prepared to accept them. It's a special education program, and so we're legally mandated to accept any student who is a special education student. The mandate also requires that you don't have more than 50% students who are special needs. So every time we have a special needs student enter, we have to have a community peer enter as well. And so it's two children every time someone ages in. It's very difficult to prepare for how many classes you need for that.
Yeah, I can imagine. That's my only question, I think.
Anything else on the income side?
Just one. You mentioned having to budget for lots of uncertainties going into the year and make assumptions around that. Can you talk a little bit about how those assumptions in the fiscal year '24 budget have kind of played out and what decisions you've had to make? And if those assumptions went either positive or negative in fiscal year '25, what decisions you would make in either direction?
Yes, it's a great question. Fortunately, we have really been working hard with Connor Reed, specifically on the ARPA funds. The ARPA funds have helped us to get one year extended on some of the programs that we were actually going to lose this year. For example, we have an early college and career program where we subsidize college credits for students that can't afford them. And they take it while it's concurrent while they're in high school. We would have had to lose that. We also have a summer school program. We have two summer school programs. One is legally required for special education students. We've never had a program for general education students who want an enrichment program or who just don't, they don't want to face what's called summer loss over the summer. We were able to receive funds from ARPA to continue that program this summer. That may not continue next year if we don't find a way to do that. It's been wildly popular. It's called SEA, S-E-A, the Summer Enrichment Academy. So we encourage the kids to come and spend the summer by the sea. Things like that. Yeah.
Just another general question. Free lunch, is that offered to all the kids?
Right now, it is, yes. And breakfast.
And breakfast.
Mm-hmm. That's a federal program.
Anything else on our side?
I just have one. You used the example of computer science mandatory for all high schoolers. Is that, that's not just an example, that's something that is pending or that is?
It is. It is something that they're working very hard to get. Pre-K, universal pre-K also. You may have heard that in the news as well. So there are some mandates that, we never know exactly when they'll go through, but they're currently being entertained. And when they happen, we can't just pivot in one year. And so we really should be proactively planning for them, but we're not in a proactive phase right now.
Do you get any sort of wiggle room or any sort of grace period to stay up to that?
It depends on the legislation, right? So we're not really sure. It depends what language comes out.
So it could be. Congratulations. Starting next year, all these kids have to be.
We are the land of unfunded mandates.
You'll hear probably that at Public Works.
Yeah.
Across the board.
Yeah.
From all the departments.
Yeah.
I think Dr. Cabral touched on, you know, there are a lot of requirements from the state or federal government that impact school operations, town operations, and many of them will be sort of discussed in the context of, I think at this point, we all say all the money, right? So there's been a lot of coverage. In Massachusetts in particular, this year, almost whiplash inducing of what seems like financial calamity around the Commonwealth with city, town, and particularly school budgets. Going into fiscal '25 after multiple years of headlines about double-digit percent revenue growth on the state level and the Student Opportunity Act and historic amounts of funding and the most money ever. And so if you don't read 400-page budget books from your town every day, that, you hear that, you see that, and when you look at, you see free lunch, universal kindergarten, bipartisan infrastructure, law, ARPA, and it seems like there's just this kind of ocean of money. So how can there possibly be any challenge, right? And a lot of those new programs, noble as they may be, such as free lunch, sometimes include very, very, very critical words at the end, subject to appropriation. And if that's an annual subject, then, you know, with this, if that larger government runs into budget challenges, as they occasionally do, then all of a sudden, it's not there, right? And it's incredibly challenging. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the things that's the subtext here is you can, of course, theoretically, once something like that goes from being a fee-based program to sometimes you fund it locally, sometimes the state steps in from a perspective of this is the moral thing to do or this is the appropriate thing to do. You talk about lunch. It's not, I'm not a professional educator, but I'm a dad, and hungry kids don't pay the best attention, right? So makes a lot of sense. But then if they hit financial troubles and that money is gone, trying to reintroduce then and then fees and to break out kind of a differentiation of which kids are going to be able to have food there and which aren't is a really difficult thing to do. And so there's a lot of those types of mandates for the schools. For Public Works, PFAS technically is not an unfunded mandate, despite its $17 million hole in the capital budget. It's because unfunded mandate provisions in Massachusetts apply to new mandates, not expansions of pre-existing ones, even if the expansion costs money. So I think it's really important, I said a little bit of this last night, that it can sometimes be, I think, frustrating if you're a resident, a taxpayer, and you tune into these things once in a while and you see folks talking about how somehow $109 million isn't enough. We do the best we can, and as Dr. Cabral's presentation showed in a lot of ways, really outperform our per capita spending as far as our outcomes. But there are just a, almost a numerable amount of state and federal requirements, mandates, that we are expected to implement on this level. We don't have a smaller government underneath us to send up the bill to, and so it's a difficult environment. Forgive my monologue.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that? So the revenue problem, right? You mentioned it was, it's a revenue problem. And relative to our local peers and our educational peers that we are underfunded per student basis, is there anything that we can or should we, should be doing that would bring more revenue into the town? Or is that simply an allocation issue between the school department and other departments in town?
There are a lot of things that can be done, but many of them are long-term. You know, I quickly referenced the sewer earlier, right? Creating sewer projects so that you can stimulate business in town or meeting with our legislators to try to change wage adjustment factor. The fact of the matter is very mathematical. We have increases of up to 8% overall, when we have 14% of out-of-district and 10.7% transportation. And we are facing rising inflation costs as well for all the products we need to buy. And 2.5% on a taxation rate doesn't match 8%. And $30 per student doesn't match 8%. So if it's not coming in, there's nothing more to tap into. The costs escalate, the needs escalate, the proactive needs become reactive, and it's just a matter of time until you run out of ancillary resources. You have to start lopping off programs.
You also, oh, sorry. I was just going to say Representative Doherty is initiating a study committee for Chapter 70 and how those allocations are. And I think that's something that you worked on together to move that forward. We've been into the State House together with Connor, talking about the wage adjustment factor, meeting with legislators. You know, I have to commend Dr. Cabral. She's at every single one of those hearings at the State House, talking to, talking to anybody that will listen, beating the drum for Easton. And they just don't, everybody's doing the same thing. Everybody needs more money. And unfortunately, as a minimum aid community, we don't have a lot of room to move around that. But I want to congratulate you for not giving up, because you keep going back for more. And, you know, maybe one of these days, they'll be able to do something about it. But I just think that we can't stop asking our legislators and letting them know, because if we stop talking about it, they're going to think, oh, they figured it out, you know? And when you're not out there crying in the public all the time, they're like, ah, they'll figure it out. Well, you know, there's only so much you can figure out, you know?
I would like to add to that, particularly on your revenue side question. We have been facing this challenge, particularly when it comes to state aid. So what minimum aid actually translates into year-over-year growth factor is 0.9%. So our largest revenue category is taxation. That's capped by 2.5% plus new growth, and I'll come back to the growth. State aid, second largest, really important. Used to fund about a third of the cost of running EPS. Now it funds 20% proportionally, right? Because that's growing at 1% or less a year. If minimum aid is funded at 104 this year, that'll be 3%. The Massachusetts Municipal Association, the Association of Superintendents, we have been pleading with the state for 15 years to move minimum aid to 100 per pupil. Had that been the case since 2009, and had that been growing by 3% a year since 2009, we'd be in pretty good shape. But we'll take it this year if we can get it. We have not kind of just looked at that and said, well, it's pretty tough. We're just going to keep moving chairs around on the Titanic, and that's it. We have no grant writers on staff, which you wouldn't know. We win a colossal amount of competitive grants as well. And so we've worked with, and you'll hear some of it tonight from Public Works. We've brought in collectively, including schools, more than $60 million in competitive state and federal grant funds, particularly in the areas of infrastructure and facilities in the past five years. A lot of that, you may not necessarily think, you know, how does Blanch Ames tie into economic development? But when you have a school like Blanch Ames constructed, that only further adds to the desirability of property in Easton. That creates its own issues with affordability, which is a major crisis. But that does add to the property values. We're an overwhelmingly residential tax base, and that is a good thing in the long term for the fiscal health of the community. We, 15 years ago, nine, 15 years ago, 10 years ago, had zero public wastewater capacity in Easton. So your economic growth potential is extraordinarily limited by that. We've constructed more than $40 million of sewer districts in the past 10 years, leveraging a substantial amount of state grants. And you see the areas where that has happened. Main Street, 138, and particularly 106, there has been millions in new growth. So in the wake of a recession, before we had sewer infrastructure and zoning reform to let property owners do more with their land with better infrastructure, we were averaging pretty, some of this was broader economics as well. I'm not trying to say we have some kind of magic growth button. If we did, I would be beating that thing up. But our new growth was averaging about $400,000 a year. And that got up to, closer to $900,000 per year in fiscal years '17, '18, and '19, which was awesome. A lot of that was attributable to denser housing, which has been a growth factor as well for us. That adds permanently to the tax base and takes that 2.5%, closer to 3.5%, 4%. That makes a huge difference in doing that without an override. And then COVID hit. And so we're building back from that, but that's been tough. We've seen a tremendous increase in our permitting departments and the work that they're doing that brings in more revenue. We heard last night, Building Department, 3.5 staff. Their operations cost about $300,000-something thousand. They're bringing in over a million in revenue this year. So we haven't kind of just said, this is hard, and the iceberg's coming, and it's just going to hit us at some point. We have been really intentional and deliberate to build a lot of infrastructure in a lot of different sectors, coupled with zoning reform, to try to encourage, successfully encourage a substantial amount of new growth. And that's frankly the only reason we've made it this far.
Just one for me, Dr. Cabral. And this sparked from Chris's earlier question. I'm just curious how the relationship is with the teachers' union. And you can probably read between the lines on.
On why that question has popped up. So with all the other news that's come about in a lot of school districts around here, how is that relationship with the union?
We've been working very collaboratively. As you can imagine, it gets very tense at times like this, because everyone's looking for the services that they need. They're advocating for their children. They're advocating for their school and their needs. And they're all advocating from the same well. So it gets very, very tense. And people are really just trying to, you know, our budget process starts with evaluating the strategic plan. You can remember, you can imagine how frustrating it is, year after year, to be part of an exercise where you look at the strategic plan. You know what's best for kids professionally, ethically, socially, emotionally. You come up with a fantastic plan of how to get them there. And you list these resources, and they slowly get chipped away to even a 5% that was very difficult to get to. It's a very defeating feeling. And so they keep trying to make do every year with what they have. You know, they don't see transportation increases in their classroom. They don't see regulation increases in their classroom. They see what's in their classroom, as they should. And so of course, they want the resources there. So it gets, it gets very tense. It's frustrating for all of us. But we, as has been mentioned, we won't stop. We'll keep working. We'll do everything we can to make sure we're advocating for the best possible resources for our children.
Thank you.
Sure.
That's from our side. Thank you both.
Dr. Cabral, thank you. Just one question on the federal, on the meals. What, prior to COVID, what was, we had.
Students were paying, right? And then was it during COVID that all students started receiving free lunch?
Right, it was during COVID, yes. We actually, when schools were shut down, we actually had a meal program where staff would volunteer their time and come to school and hand out meal packages. Food service workers would come to school and prepare meals. And cars, parents would come by and pick up boxes for the week or breakfasts for the week. So it started then, and then this is the second year, I think, of the free, free universal program.
Can you, any idea, what are the, what have you heard, rumblings of that program and its?
Well, it depends who you ask, because we had an audit this year by the, by.
USDA.
It was the USDA and the Department of Ed. We had a joint audit this year. And I had heard, it had been very well talked about in our superintendent circles, that there was word that there wasn't going to be enough. I had talked to some people at the State House that had said, we're very worried. We're not really sure how we're going to be able, that's going to be able to be funded this year. But when I met with Desi and USDA, they said, well, we've not heard anything. We don't know what you're talking about. Everything's fine. So I, we probably won't know for sure, again, until August, which is when we found out this past year.
And then it comes back to eligible students, right? If the program were to go away, then it's whatever that percentage was.
By the poverty rate determines if they get free or reduced lunch. Was that your question?
Yeah, right. And then if it went away for next year and we're back to that means-based, what roughly is the cost for, or I guess there is no, then it shifts back to pay, you know, if you don't meet the means-based test, right?
Yeah, so not everyone pays, right? Because if they are, if they have a poverty rate, then they don't pay. We do get some subsidy from the government. It doesn't pay for the program completely. But also, we are also in this really unfortunate post-COVID period where the real, the only way you can really generate revenue for your food service program to try to get into even a break even. try to get into even a break-even situation is you offer more variety and you offer more specialties, a salad bar, a sandwich bar. We are grossly understaffed in food service right now, just like most other industries. So we've cut almost all of those programs. We have very few à la carte items because we don't have people to man the registers, we don't have people to man a salad bar, which is very labor-intensive. And so our means of revenue, should we lose the funding, is greatly decreased right now, which creates the deficit that our study showed.
Thank you.
Sure.
So I have one question for you. On contractual salary obligations, is that primarily driven by this year, year-over-year increases, or are we in a big contract union negotiation year? Trying to think what's coming ahead.
We are going into contract negotiations this fall with our three largest negotiating units.
Okay, so we can expect next year might even be a bigger contractual obligation?
I have no idea.
Possibly.
Yes. It's an unknown, put it that way, it's an unknown.
Okay, but it's, it's a big unknown for, okay.
Exactly.
Thank you, it's very helpful.
I, I think the towns' unions are also up next year.
Seven, I'm looking at the sheets. Yes, all of our union contracts expire again in fiscal '25, so that is also an unknown, large fixed costs to be determined between now and next May.
Are the schools staggered, do they all fall the same year like the towns do?
The schools, so our three largest unions are in next year, and then our three smaller collective bargaining units are the year after.
Okay.
And then we have maybe 30 or 35 individual contracts, and they're split between the two years.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Dr. Cabral.
Hi.
Good evening. So my question is on student population. In the past, say, few years, have you seen a pattern of, of a rising student population?
Yes.
Okay, so that being said, in your assumptions moving forward, do you, do you carry with, with that the rising population in those assumptions moving forward?
Well, it's hard to say because it, it depends on where the population is. So right now, it's our earliest learners. So our population fluctuates, we have these cohorts that move through, and occasionally we have a bubble that moves through, and we plan for that. But as they, as they graduate, what we're finding is that our population boom right now is the pre-K and kindergarten, and in great part because of Blanche Ames Elementary School. So that's the bubble that's gonna be moving through. If you look at our total number of students, you'll see that it is very similar, or, or up or down a few students each year. But if you look at our rates for pre-K, K, and first grade, they're huge right now. So that bubble is going to progressively move through the district, and yes, it is going to, we're gonna have to progressively need to add sections. So last year, I had to add three pre-kindergarten sections, the year before I had to add two. I don't know how many I'm gonna have to add this year. Those pre-K students become kindergarten students, so I may need to add kindergarten this year, that's why I put that in there. Next year, they're gonna, the year after, they're gonna become first-grade students. So that's going to escalate through the system, yes.
I guess, you know, where I'm going with it, my concern is because of Blanche Ames, because it's an amazing school, it's not just a bubble, you know? You usually have these spikes-
Right.
And then they could, they drop back down. But this spike, in a good way, but concerning financial way, it might stay there.
Well, okay, so that gets a little bit more complex. It's a good way, and the reason we're trying to increase enrollment is because we're a minimum aid district because we don't meet the foundation formula. I have worked with some financial experts over the last decade and narrowed down the needs for our district to be three, to get us to what I believe will get us into the foundation formula, which triggers much more funding and triggers things like the Student Opportunity Act, for which we get nothing right now. Those three things were full free-day kindergarten, which we've accomplished. I know, again, it sounds counterintuitive, you pay for kids to come to kindergarten, you don't take tuition anymore and you make more money. The reason is, the foundation formula is what the state tells you every year it's gonna cost you to educate the children in Easton. So everybody's got a little price, and they say it will cost this to educate, they're all different, it will cost this to educate a kindergarten student, this for a fifth-grade student, this for a high school student, this for a special needs student, and then there are seven or eight poverty levels. Depending on the specific poverty level someone's at, they cost a certain amount. And they tell you, that's what it's gonna cost to educate your kids this year. If you pay tuition for anything, like kindergarten, they count the kindergarten student as a half a kid, they only count the part that you pay for. So we doubled our kindergarten numbers in the foundation formula and ticked up closer to our goal. The second was increased enrollment, which is what we're doing. We are going to get it to a tipping point. When our enrollment gets too far enough in the district, it is going to move us closer to foundation. And then the third is vocational technical education, or Chapter 74. So people in the audience may be aware that we have been working really hard on our career preparation and early college programming. One of the things that could potentially get cut once the grant funding is gone, we're trying to work toward what's called Chapter 74 certification. Because in that list of items, of price tags, so to speak, a vocational student is far more, is considered far more expensive to educate than a general education student. But if we have students who are in our childcare program right now, and now we have a daycare where they have the lab, and they're doing that programming anyway, if we can get certified as a Chapter 74 district, it triggers the vocational technical payments. So it's taken us several years to get to full free-day kindergarten, to increase, build the school and increase the enrollment, and now we're working on the career and college readiness, but that is now in a very tenuous place because of our funding. So we're trying to get closer to that foundation formula, which is a graduate-level course in itself. Happy to do something on it at some point if anyone's interested, but just sort of triggering that is going to hopefully bring a lot more funds into the district.
Okay, and my last question-
So enrollment is a good thing, is a good point.
Right, right, so my last question is, given the pattern and trajectory of where things are going, and I know this is such a tough question to answer, and I'm sure you can't, but maybe-
Is it optional?
It's not optional. Well, it could be optional. How far away are you from that tipping point? See, it's a tough one.
Well, I'm sorry?
What was that?
1.5 million-
Yeah.
Away from the budget.
Yeah.
We've, we've gone up, yes, broadens, we've gone up and down. We've gotten closer, we've gotten a little further away this year with the new house ways and means budget, it might, we might get a little closer. But you, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
No, that's okay. We have been more than $2 million away from it. Basically, when you get to that point of how much it's gonna cost you to educate kids, you get to tap into more funding. And then after that, it's like every dollar is more, so if it costs you $5 over foundation, you get $5 more. If it costs you $200 over foundation, you get 200 more. So we don't want to just get to foundation, we then are able to grow from there. But until we get to foundation, we're gonna stay minimum aid, which could be $30 a year.
Not to be a raincloud, but I think it's really important to point out, as Dr. Cabral's saying, as Chair Starr is saying, it's a moving target, and one of the factors, correct me if I'm wrong, there's, there are things outside of our control, right? So Dr. Cabral's identified that some programs like vocational that are currently grant-funded, looking at next year, I don't think anyone here is trying to say the odds look good that a lot of grant-funded things are gonna sustain for multiple years, right? So that's a risk, and then that puts you farther away.
Right.
Another factor that influences it, and correct me if I'm wrong here, I've gone to a couple of those courses, they're dreadful, is-
Mine won't be.
Yeah, I didn't mean yours, I said, certain CPA. When this school, and this isn't Easton-specific, but when a school district overall operating budget increases above that net school spending, that also puts daylight between, right? So the state has a formula that says you should need roughly this much per student.
Yes.
But if your actual facts on the ground, based on fixed costs, are growing faster than that-
Right.
That can cause your actual budget this year to be farther away from what the state says.
Correct.
The state looks at that, looks at our enrollment, looks at Easton's economics, and says, through the formula, no one would like to say this, but what the formula says is, you will get minimum aid because you can afford the better quality of education. And if you want a substantially better quality, then you can have an override. That's what the, that's how Chapter 70 works, right? And one of the reasons why this is thankfully getting so much more attention now, so it's not just Dr. Cabral and I giving TED Talks on it to each other, is because of broader demographic changes where folks are having fewer kids throughout the Commonwealth, and now, 2/3 of all schools are minimum aid, right? So now it's affecting the large majority of families, of districts, and of children in this state. So this is a, a, a real challenge. So again, I'm not trying to be doom and gloom, I just think there, and there has been a ton of progress, but it, it's a moving target.
Understood, thank you.
You're welcome.
Very comprehensive report, as usual, thank you very much for that. One of the things that you mentioned, besides the minimum aid issue, and, and thanks to our, our state rep, hopefully the $104 is gonna be, is gonna come through both in the House and the Senate.
Our budget depends on it.
And, but you talked about the wage adjustment factor, can you go into a little bit more detail about-
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay, you sure? Okay. So the wage adjustment factor, so there are a couple of things. First of all, Easton is in the Boston labor mar, excuse me, the Brockton labor market. The labor market is set on the presumption that if you are in the Boston labor market, like most of our bordering neighbors, you need to pay your employees more because you're in the Boston labor market. And people in Easton who are in the Brockton labor, labor market can pay less because of where we are geographically, even though geographically, an arc all around us are in the Boston labor market. So you get less, in the foundation formula. Obviously, we cannot pay Easton educators less than our competitive districts around us. We are really riding this on the backs of our educators right now, as I tried to articulate in the presentation. So we have to pay them prevailing wage. And so that puts an inordinate amount of our budget, that's already so much lower than our neighbors, on the, the contractual obligations and leaves so much less for everything else in comparison to everyone else. So Senator Timolty worked with us a couple of years ago to put forward Amendment 222 to move Easton into the Boston labor market, but it was defeated in the Senate, unfortunately. In terms of the wage adjustment factor, that is based on the wages earned in town, not the, the wages of residents, but the wages earned in town. So the businesses become very important. Foxborough does really well because people who don't live in Foxborough but work at Gillette make an awful lot of money, and so the wage adjustment factor is really high there. Mansfield has the, the, the medical facilities and such, and so the wages of the people who work there is higher. Targets are fantastic, you know, restaurants are fantastic, but it does not move the needle on the wage adjustment factor. High-tech industry, medical facilities, stadiums, those kinds of things are what is so advantageous to our neighbors right now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So what you're saying is we need a stadium?
Yes. That's what I said.
You heard her first.
Well, just to wrap things up, I want to recognize that the Chair of the School Committee, Jen Starr, is in the audience, so thank you for being here tonight. And, and also Andrea, I don't know your title, I'm sorry, I, we really haven't even met so-
It's okay, she's Director of Finance on the Easton Public School side.
She's just the Director of Finance. She's fantastic.
Thank you for being here.
She's the silent partner of everything, she's fantastic.
Awesome. I, I want to just mention how complimentary you are to your staff and your teachers, and, you know, great leadership really talks about the people around them, and you've got a lot of, you know, we've all got a lot of really tough stuff around us, and trying to maintain those good relationships and those good attitudes in these tough times, you recognize that that is important, it's a stressor on everyone, so I just want to, you know, call you out for, for doing a really good job with that leadership and, and keeping those lines of communication open. I'm gonna hit you up with something, just to close this on a really good key. Give me your, give me your top three things last year that happened in the schools that were something really spectacular.
Okay, I'll let Jen do one, just to be fair. We hired Andrea Starzewski. We opened Blanche Ames Elementary School.
Oh, gosh. How do we begin? We have our, we have students who are winning awards across the state and across the region for athletics, for performing arts, marching band, you name it.
Music, visual arts.
Yeah.
Academics.
Our kids are, they, they are given tremendous opportunities and take great advantage of them and bring a lot of pride to Easton, so our, our students are awesome. And we added a student rep to the school committee, who is, she's a non-voting member, but a very active participant, and that's been really, really wonderful for our connectivity, to have that student voice right on the committee with us every step of the way.
High, across the state, so, you know-
Number one in Bristol County.
So-
Top 11% in state.
I mean, that's big stuff, so-
That's the team.
Yeah.
That's why it's so easy to compliment them.
Yep, well, thank you for all the great work on that, and-
Thank you.
Thank you for the comprehensive budget information and for being a good partner with us in the budget.
Thank you.
Next, we have the real star of the show, David Field for DPW.
DPW starts on page 93 in your budget books.
Good evening. Dave Field, Director of Public Works. With me tonight is Greg Swan, Deputy Director. Rich Tierney, our Water Operations Manager, couldn't be here tonight, he's on vacation, good for him. So I will, I'll try to go quick, recognizing my colleagues in the back there, police and fire, so I'll shoot through this really quickly. If you have any questions, feel free to stop me, ask questions anytime. DPW has 39 full-time employees across four divisions. We are known for road maintenance, we handle all the public roads in town, line striping, street signs. We supplied 605 million gallons of water to 7,600 services last year, did 93,000 meter reads and sent out a little over 32,000 bills. One of the things we look at on our water system is water main breaks, and last year, shockingly, we only had seven water main breaks, it's kind of an anomaly, and that's really probably due to the warmer winter than normal. We've already had eight this year, so we'll be probably right back to normal, but that just indicated, indicates that our system definitely needs some updating, and it's something we're working on. We used to be known for snow and ice, not so much lately. Our five-year averages are very low compared to where they used to be, only 20 inches of snow on the average for the last five years, but we're not that far removed from 2015, where we had $1.1 million in spending and 110 inches of snow, so don't want anyone to think snow is a thing of the past. We handle building maintenance of all school in-town buildings, it's 794,000 square feet of building space. We did over, just over 1,000 work orders last year, building-related. We handle grounds maintenance with seasonal workers from the schools. We do a lot of mowing on 42 acres of sports fields, 176 acres of general mowing, 29 cemeteries, playgrounds, turf field. Our forestry guys do about 380, did 389 trees last year, removed those, and trimmed another 197. We do vehicle maintenance in all town vehicles, except for fire, they have their own mechanic, that's a lot of work. We handle GIS system for the entire town, we average 32,000 user sessions per year, and we pump out a lot of web applications and maps, both internally and externally for the public. We take care of the sewer system for the town, we have three sewer districts. Last year, we collected 26 million gallons of sewage. We handle the tree, Northeastern Village wastewater treatment plant, four pump stations, a siphon, and odor control station, we do permitting, inspections, we camera and clean our lines. As you know, we, stormwater is a big, big thing, especially with the amount of rain we've had. We have just over 5,000 drainage structures, we cleaned 852 catch basins last year and maintained our NEPDS permit compliance. We do handle the solid waste and recycling administration for the town, that's probably our number one call, is about solid waste and recycling. We actually took over delivery and repair of all the carts last year, so that's been a lot of work for us. We- We manage our own streetlights. Last year, we did 50 streetlight repairs and or changes. There's a lot of new poles going in, so those all have to be moved. That's done by DPW. And we do engineering and project management. We have three PEs on staff. We do site plan reviews, subdivision reviews, in-house permit inspections. We design permits, survey and layout various projects. Right now, we're managing $185 million in current and future capital projects on roadways, our water system and our building projects. And this is just some examples of some of the special projects that we have designed and constructed. The school field expansion, which was a few years ago during COVID, we designed this and built it in-house. We redid the drainage system at Town Hall two years ago, have that help to dry out the basement, which is great for the town clerk and voting down in the basement. Handled the Town Hall exterior renovation project. And just this past fall, we designed and installed a new septic system and plumbing improvements at Town Hall. We worked with the schools to design a new AO OA Court reconstruction project. Went very well. Our civil engineer was out there on a daily basis and ended up with a great project. We've handled the Red Mill Road Water Treatment Plant Administration. As you can see, the on the left, the kind of the just cleared site in the building started taking shape about two years to get where we are today. And there's a shot from the fall. We'll be doing a ribbon cutting in two weeks for that plant, so that's a successful project.
It's May 5th at 11, Cinco de Mayo at the water plant.
Unrelated, but yes.
Oh, it's true. So so as part of, we thought with Dave managing 185 million in capital projects, we actually own a pair of scissors now.
Yeah, we're not. We're going to dull those up quick. Our PFOS treatment plants, something we also handled, that construction. Those came online in December. Managed the Depot Street reconstruction. That was 10 years of design and three years of construction. That was just finished last year. And we do a lot of smaller projects. Our buildings and grounds staff's very talented. We do various office renovations and moves. And here is an example, the town clerk's entry area that was redone. We built some bunk rooms for the fires fire department. And what we're currently working on right now in the design phase is our new public works and public safety facility. This is a picture of the rendering of what DPW will look like from the front of the building. And this is a kind of the opposite, looking from the rear where the fuel island is back at the building and just a couple of shots of what the inside's going to look like. So it's something we're very excited about and we've been putting a lot of time in with our designers to to get this right. And this is a shot of the vehicle maintenance bay. So with all that, we still do a lot of other miscellaneous things like operate our landfill. We administer various grants, like our Green Communities Grant. We get competitive grants related to those things, small bridge grants. We do bridge and culvert inspections, traffic safety evaluations. Arbor Day, we do a tree planting for Arbor Day. We handle hazardous waste day. We do voting setups for the town clerk and graduation setups for the schools. One of our most important roles is emergency response. We're here to, as a first responder, to help our partners, our police and fire, anytime that we're needed. An example of some emergency response from this past year, over the winter, we had a sinkhole open up on Bay Road during a snowstorm. It basically was the size of a car could have fit in it. So we quickly had to mobilize and repair that. We'll be doing a permanent repair. We'll have to replace the whole line this year. And then on the right, we did have a tornado touchdown in July. And again, that makes a lot of work for DPW. So that's what DPW does. So now to look at our budget. So this is an overall snapshot, and I think this narrative starts on page 93. Overall, our budget between operating budget and our enterprise funds is about $12.4 million. It's going up almost a million. And primarily, that's due to the water enterprise account and solid waste. On administration, there are no changes in the expense budget. And overall, administration's going up 2.6%. On buildings and grounds, we have a lot of adjustments, but overall, we're cutting about $17,000 out of the expense line in buildings and grounds. And overall, the budget's going up 0.9% for B and G.
Dave, if I could just, real quick, for some of the members who weren't here last night, one of the when you see the size of what they're taking care of here, you say, why are they cutting that? And that's one of the things that we had to do to balance the budget this year, given the revenue concerns, was that we did impose 10% expense cuts in all departments to help patch through for one more year. So that's not representative of what is needed, but that was what we had to do to get to a balance.
Thank you, Connor. So on highway side, similarly, there's another a cut to highway expenses. So an overall 0.8% increase on the highway side. Snow and ice, no change for this year. For water, this is where we get to the kind of the large increases. It's 18.2% overall increase. And the reasons for that, we're adding a second water treatment plant operator. It's needed to help run the the new treatment plants we have. And we've increased chemical supplies by $190,000, primarily for the new treatment plants we have. Solid waste and recycling, that's going up 10%, primarily due to increase in contractual services. The latest contract amendment with Waste Management, their costs have gone up and they have to pass that on to us. And so that's where we are with solid waste. And sewer enterprise account, pretty much no change in expenses, just a small increase in debt service. So that's only going up 0.4%. So with all that said, I I'm very proud of my department. We do a great job. We do a lot of work, as you can see, in a lot of different areas. But I'd be remiss if I didn't mention some of the concerns we have going forward. None of these are going to stop us, you know, now or next year or even the next year after that. But just continuing to not fund our buildings, roads and our fleet at a certain level will at some point cost us more money in the end. And it's something we just need to be aware of. Looking at what we've done since 2012, as Connor alluded to earlier, we added three sewer districts that didn't exist before, added our first wastewater treatment plant, added our first water treatment plant, including three PFOS treatment plants, programmed over $21 million in tip funds for roadway projects. And we added substantially more capability in our Buildings and Grounds Division. In 2012, we had two skilled trade employees. We currently have six. That's great, but unfortunately, we need 17. Based on the metrics of 794,000 square feet of building space, we need 17 full-time equivalents. So this is where we run leaner than we really should be. We do a great job, but it does require a lot of overtime because we're still putting out fires. We're never really at that point where we're doing preventative maintenance, getting ahead of things. We're always kind of in that reactive mode. On the vehicle maintenance side, based on our composition of our fleet, we should have six and a half mechanics. We have two during the operational audits, 2014 or 17, sorry. We're it's it's tough to keep track, but highway was identified as the second lowest staffed of all the comparable communities and DPW administration was lowest staffed. And then looking at up-to-date numbers now, when you compare us to our core and neighboring communities, Easton ranked 10th out of 14 in per capita public works spending. And I mentioned the overtime. This is combined highway and buildings, buildings and ground overtime. We've actually leveled off a little bit, which is good, but we're still spending well over our budgeted overtime budget, which is about $160,000 right now. So again, these are just concerns that we have going forward. We really need to be spending probably a million dollars locally on our roads to get us close to that $1.8 million mark, to have a level service of level service of roads. Our buildings, we should be spending about 2% of our annual replacement cost on preventive maintenance and capital repairs. That should be around $6.8 million a year. We're not coming anywhere close to that. And our fleet maintenance, we're not doing horribly, but our fleet is older than it should be and we're spending a little less than we should be on an annual basis. So those are just concerns that I just wanted to bring up. But overall, DPW is doing a great job. My staff is great to work with. And I think, you know, we're very skilled. They they do a great job. And, you know, there's no emergency tomorrow. The town's not going to light on fire. But, you know, these are concerns. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or.
Sir, on this side. I have two. The first is snow and ice, just because I feel like it's left out. We used to love it so much. But you we're around 400K. We're going to continue on with that as a budget line item for the rainy, the snowy day fund, essentially. But is there any sort of criteria for? I assume there'd be no reason to ever change that, essentially, because if there isn't usage of it, it just goes back into the into free cash at the end of the year.
That's correct. And Connor, Wendy can step in and correct me. But if we go down in our budget, then we lose our ability to overspend, correct?
Right.
So right now, we have that ability to overspend. If we have a a lean year, you know, a heavy year, we can overspend. And if we don't spend it, it just goes into the operating budget, so.
The second one was you mentioned water mains. I wasn't aware they broke up, and as they did. But someone said last night that there's essentially there's a replacement criteria process going on as well. Could you give me a few lines on that?
So we're trying to make sure that our water mains are not really older than 50 to 75 years. That's kind of the useful life. So we're working on through our asset management process in our GIS system to make sure we're identifying and getting rid of those pipes that are older than they should be. But we also use, we look at breaks and clusters of breaks because sometimes we'll have pipe that is bad, that breaks frequently at a certain age, even though it might not be the oldest. So we it's a combination of trying to proactively replace our system, keep it on the younger side, and then go after those high break clusters. And then, so we kind of do it in a two-fold approach. We'd love love to be able to go out and replace a whole bunch of main right now that we know is in kind of tough shape, but we just don't have the funding. We're we're budgeting about 1.5 million a year in capital to to knock off those main replacements. But we also have new roads to pave. And so, for example, we have Day Street, Barrows right here in Oakland, which that pipe is from 1887. It actually doesn't break very much. It's in pretty good shape, but it needs to be replaced for us to repave these roads. We can't in good conscience not not replace that pipe. So it's a two-fold approach, trying to get rid of the older stuff and then those high cluster breaks.
Is the cluster piece?
You are replacing those this summer.
Yes.
Right, that's what that's what came up last.
Yeah.
Is the cluster because you see a pattern of this type of pipe or this pipe from this year has some sort of deficiency in it? And then you know more are going to go?
So that's a that's a really good question. So there's a lot of things that lead into breaks. So we can we plot up where all the breaks happen in our GIS system. And then if you look at the construction, you know, when it was put in, you look at breaks per, you know, inch per diameter mile, whatever, you can kind of come up with a formula what needs to go. Most of them are so apparent that we just know that we need to do Prospect Street. We did Founder Street. There's there's certain ones that just we they break all the time, so we want to get those out of the system. But yeah, that's our process.
Thanks, sir. Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
Dave, a quick question on the waste management and the increase in the rates there.
Yeah.
How much of that today is paid for, like when we look at the bill and what we pay as consumers versus what you're absorbing or what?
What the town's absorbing.
So it's 100% enterprise account. So it is fully funded by the ratepayers. And that's every once in a while, we have to increase our rates. The last rate increase was last year. We went from $90 to $100 a quarter. But we hadn't raised it for a few years before that. Well, you know, it's something that we work on together to try to figure out when that needs to happen. I think we're good for the next year going forward. But the next contract, whether we bid it or do an amendment with waste management, we'll have to evaluate when we need to increase that cost again, but it is 100% paid for by the users.
Okay, thank you. If I could just add to that, I think that's important to point out. You know, if you're just looking at the totality of this presentation, say, oh, DPW has 11 million and it's going up by, what, 9%? Nearly all of that growth is in enterprise accounts because those rates are not tied to the general fund and brought to and a half. Right? That's why if you look at the capital plan in detail, you'll see that even though water division and highway are all part of public works, the fleet and highway is funded out of general fund cap by two and a half capacity. Water division has rates that if the needs of the program are sort of out, the board can set them, set revenue immediately. And there's, what's the difference? I mean, the fleet is substantially younger. For the water division, just because of the capital program is healthier. And so most of the general fund public works budgets next year are going up between 1 and 2%.
Correct.
I think that's important to highlight here.
So the town departments and the schools all do a tremendous job pursuing grants, which is huge. I mean, we're always hearing regularly about grants that have been received and it's a huge impact on the things we're able to do. With the outlook from the state and federal cuts that are going to affect grants, we know it's going to happen. And also the MBTA zoning impact, if we, you know, go a certain way with that. How does that factor into your situation next year? I assume this is going to be tremendous because every time you present, you're like Mass Works, Mass Works. It's just various, especially blue program grants.
Yeah, so most of our stuff is pretty far out. So the shorter term stuff, right now, we're looking at a grant for sidewalks, finish the sidewalks on Lincoln Street. So right now, hopefully, we have a good prospect of getting that. What that looks like in two or three years, I don't know. Mass Works grants, we've been very successful with, between planning and the town administration's office, really getting those grants for our infrastructure projects, which have really deferred the cost that we've had to pay for betterment costs on sewer projects and things like that. So we've been very successful in that. Again, those are things that probably wouldn't affect us for a few more years because we have one secured now for the project we're working on. And then the biggest source of funding for us is tip projects. So we were able to get $12 million to construct Depot Street that was paid for by state and federal funds in the tip project. We just had to fund the design and land takings. And we used some chapter 90 money for that in the land takes, because we're done locally. So for a small amount of money, you know, a small, you know, million and a half dollars, we got a $12 million improvement. So those things hopefully will stay, you know, you know, keep going. We're going to pursue another one on Founder Street. That's right now $15 million. So it really won't change for DPW. We'll keep on pursuing. And I don't see it drying up too much on that bigger level. What happens with those smaller grants, like sidewalk grants, things like that, that could have impacted us, but not today and not tomorrow.
Okay, that's good. It drives that fear of what's coming down the road a little bit in some ways.
We'll be okay for a little bit.
Okay.
I have no questions, just a couple of comments. You have an amazing grant writer, by the way. I tip my cap to him. Dave's the grant writer of staff. Single grant writer in this entire room. Just throwing that out there. Right over everyone's head, huh? You want to take this one, Patrick? Sure, you forgot the mic. No, I think I say this every year and I think you know what I'm about to say. And I've said this for like seven, eight years in a row now. I have no idea how you do what you do with what you have. It's baffling to me. It's amazing to me. How many full-time employees do you have?
39.
And what you just showed and what you do with 39 people, an extremely well-run construction outfit could not do that. So I can't thank you enough for all that you do, your staff. It is incredible.
I appreciate that. And it's surprising, too, when I look at this, like, we do a lot. And again, it's not me doing it. I'm not out there doing the work. And, you know, enough can't be said about the caliber of the people we have working on DPW.
I I have to. On Saturday after the election, I was sitting waiting for the results and your people were like all over it. And I went up and thanked them all for the job they do. They just, they swarmed. It was amazing to watch. And and I said to you earlier that watching them do the work, the work with Keating on Old Founder Street was pretty impressive. And I always look forward to your presentation every year.
Just a couple of things. I appreciate.
I appreciate you mentioning, talking about being a part of the first responder team. I don't think a lot of people, the average people that I talk to in my world, don't really recognize the DPW's role in all the public emergencies. And, you know, even a few years ago, when, you know, a couple of your people saved somebody, basically, that got a tree fell on their car, those are really important things. So I just want to call that out. I also want to call out that Greg Swan is the ADA coordinator and works with the Commission on Disabilities, which is another big role, and that when you do things like have graduation ceremonies and so forth, you are looking at things through a disability lens, and I think that's important. And I just want to say, of all the things that I've learned in my time on the board, I feel like I've learned the most about DPW using phrases in my regular world that I never thought I would be talking about, like pavement management programs and sewer infrastructure. And so you've done a really great job educating the board on all of those things, and I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right.
All right. Next.
Thank you, David.
Next, we have police.
The police budget is page 70 of your line item detail. It's like the old times, all of us here.
Here we are.
Presentations.
Keith, I'm your police chief. I've been with the town since 2002, so I'll be entering my 23rd year with the police department, and I'm wrapping up, just closing in on my second year as police chief. You know, this is our mission statement that I wanted to have in the backdrop that I thought was important, and really, three words jump out here, is integrity, compassion, and professionalism. And that's something we incorporate in everything we do each day. And another thing that I like to put paramount on is our community engagement. When I took over as chief, we were still coming out of COVID, and nobody was talking to anybody. Schools were closed. Nobody was having meaningful conversations with anyone. And so one thing I wanted to really put emphasis on was getting out back with the community, having our officers interact, and having meaningful conversations. And, you know, as Director Field mentioned, our public safety building, we spent the last year really engaging with the community and doing a lot of outreach. And, you know, a lot of the feedback I got was how impressed they were with our police department and our officers, and I was very proud of that, and that's what we're continuing to do every day. You know, some success we had in 2024, we implemented body cameras, something that was, again, important to us. We like to be on the forefront of where the policing is going. We were one of the first towns around that actually embarked on this grant. And what we ended up choosing was the Motorola camera system. And that would have been $134,000 cost that I would have been looking for a capital request to do. But through our deputy chief, who fell ill and couldn't make it tonight, he did all the legwork, so I'll give him the credit, believe me, because it was a lot of work, and he worked with Wendy Nightengale to get this done. That $134,000, $86,000 is paid through grants. So we were able to really bolster our department and our transparency, again, something I'm proud of, and at a minimal cost to the town. You know, another grant we apply for every year is the Patrick Leahy bulletproof vest grant. Vest costs about $1,000 per officer, and they have a five-year lifecycle, so we're constantly purchasing them in a yearly cycle. And so how it works is, we buy them upfront, and the federal government reimburses 50%. And then the state will reimburse us the following 50. So it's no cost to the town for us to get this extremely important equipment. You know, another success we had, and police and fire benefited from this, was we replaced all of our radio infrastructure that had been failing for, probably since I've worked for the town, but in the last 10 years, it's been end of life. We couldn't get it repaired. When we went into COVID, we couldn't even get equipment to really band-aid it together. And through our partnership with the regional dispatch center, we probably got about approximately $500,000 worth of equipment that the town didn't have to pay for. And that would have been another capital request that Chief Alexander and I would have been coming before town meeting, asking for half a million dollars that we didn't have to ask for. And to touch back on Director Field's partnership with police and fire, I will have to bring this up. Some other savings you're not going to see on the slide were, instead of hiring a vendor and paying someone to install one key component of our antenna system, Chief Alexander brought a ladder truck down to a receiver site and taught me how to operate a fire truck in about 15 minutes. And I propelled him 125 feet in the air and watched him install an antenna with Steve Legenda, the town electrician, that Director Field lent us for the day. So there's a lot of good things that go on behind the scenes that we're doing and that...
This is why we don't have a risk manager.
We're not recording.
Tonight, that was last night.
Mary Southworth's not here, so our insurance company won't hear about it. I checked before.
We're recording over the fire department.
But it just goes the lengths that we try to do to get things done when they need to get done, and we understand things cost a lot of money, and there's been major price increase in all this equipment. So it's just, it was one thing that I had to note. You know, we still, I mentioned the dispatch center. We see continued cost savings. We don't have to maintain certifications for the police officers to be EMD certified, 911 certified. So that is all shifted to the regional center. So that's a, that was a $50,000 to $75,000 cost that I was in charge of as the deputy chief eight years ago. And so that would be high six figures now to train every officer on overtime to do that 911 training. You know, another area that we helped, helped us with overtime costs, where we selected two new police officers this year. John Patterson came from Northeastern University, and Kelly DiNatale came from North Attleboro, fully trained officers with just almost 10 years' experience. They had a condensed training program, and they joined us. Our first two hires outside of civil service, so it was exciting to get them here, and they're doing great. You know, something, again, I always thank the town for this. The town puts such an importance on mental health, and, you know, really, I still don't know of a town around us that has a full-time mental health clinician. So the town has one. She works out of that office back there, Stephanie Cantov. And we have an officer, Christopher Account, our community outreach officer, and they go out, and we try to be proactive. We foresee problems that could be coming down the road, and we try to get in front of them the best we can in office services to those who need them. She came on board last February. He really started getting more involved with her, probably April, May last year. So just in about a year, they've had 150 follow-ups. And they ranged from psychiatric problems, substance abuse, domestic violence. We do hoarding issues when we work with Health and Community Services. And so there's no problem they won't go out and try to help solve. And we were able to dedicate Officer Account, two days a week, he's out of staffing, not answering calls, he's just with her. And so it's very important to us, and it's something I'd love to build off of. We could have three officers doing this. There's never enough people to help. Just a snapshot of some of the numbers. You know, I did a look back five years ago. Our calls are going up. We're a busy police department. We're a busy town. Just our calls to service went up over 4,000. 911 calls went up over 3,000. 911 calls, I'm not too surprised with. Now that we are with the regional center, we get 911 wireless calls. They come directly to Easton. So I wasn't surprised by that, but it is a significant increase in calls. Again, this isn't a full list of our calls to services, but firearms licensing, we have a lot of motor vehicle crashes, sexual assaults, property crimes, domestic assaults. That mental health number is still very high. And missing persons was off the charts this year, like I've never seen. We had a couple of high-profile saves where fire, DPW, we put drones in the air, and just down the street from Town Hall, we actually rescued an elderly dementia patient that had walked off. And I can tell you, the way the weather was that night, he wouldn't have survived. So these guys saved their lives, so. You know, so a significant change to our budget is, we're going to go into FY '25 with one less officer. And we'll get to, you know, the budget numbers later, but we are going, we have 39 full-time officers right now. We have a retirement that's coming in July, and we actually just had a retirement a few months ago, so we're actually operating with 37 right now, 38 right now. Instead of getting back to 39, we're going to hire to get back to 38. So we're losing an officer in staffing. And just to look at our counterparts, you know, some of these numbers are really mind-boggling to me. We're second to last with our core community comparison. And when I looked at the, our towns we share the regional center with, Mansfield, Foxborough, Norton, we're dead last. And if we were to staff according to the way our partners do, I'd be asking for another $800,000 in our budget tonight. I'm not. But it just goes to show, we do more with less. And we really do, and it's across the board. It's not just the police, it's fire, CPW, it's our town, it's everybody is, this is how we operate, and it's how we've always operated. It's been this way since I've started here. We've always done more with less. So speaking of less, you know, one of the things with the body cameras is, when we applied for the grant, they recommend a full-time position for every 75 cameras. So we have 40 cameras. And so it would translate into a half a position, which we didn't do. So a lot of this is falling on myself, the deputy chief, and our records clerk, who's already pretty much straight out with the way the records law has changed. She is working tirelessly with vendor billing and public records. So a lot of our time now is doing these redaction requests. It hasn't got overwhelming yet, but I'm starting to see it's going to be an issue that we're going to need to dedicate someone in-house to really handle that. You know, another need that came up was the creation of Post, the Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission. It's just another administrative duty that I have to do. This typically falls on a command-level person. I can't delegate this. There's a recertification process with police officers now. It's just very time-consuming. So there is an interview process we have to conduct with every officer. There is a paper trail that we have to upload and send to the Post Commission. They break it out so every three years, you're doing a third of your department. So I literally got the email today that I'm finished, I have to finish up our last batch that's due in June. So that really should be an administrative lieutenant's position, but at the end of the day, the chief has to sign off on the character and certification of every officer that's getting recommended for certification. You know, another group of duties that we have, we're an accredited department. Many people have heard me say that before. It's, the short of it is, we follow best practices. We've been deemed a best practice policy agency since 2010. But that comes with a lot of legwork that we have to do. We have to maintain over 300 standards that we must comply with, and every three years, an independent group of assessors come in and evaluate us. Technology and IT, we have one person for the town we rely on. Luckily, we have a police officer that used to be an IT professional, but he works midnight till 8:00 AM. So when he's not there, I either have to bring him in on overtime, or I'm doing IT work to troubleshoot with Mike Deltano, our town IT. Firearms licensing, sex offender registration, our field training program, our grant writing. Now I know who to call to help. Our cruiser maintenance, our firearms equipment inventory, and our property evidence control. These are all things that you'll consistently find in other police departments that are done by officers that are ranking, that are not in minimum staffing. Every one of these are done by an officer that is responding to calls to service, and these are duties on top of those. So if they can do some of these while they're on shift, great. If it's a busy night, they can't do it, I bring them in on overtime to complete them. Or with, when it comes to grant writing, firearms licensing, accreditation, the deputy chief and I are doing it ourselves. So when we looked again at, you know, some of our needs and how we looked at, again, I just, I selected our partners at the regional center, Norton, Mansfield, and Foxborough. And just looking at their command structure, in Easton, we have the police chief, a deputy chief, one lieutenant, six sergeants, and the rest of patrol officers. So just in Norton, they have a police chief, a deputy chief, and two lieutenants. And Mansfield and Foxborough are allocated for a chief, a deputy chief, and three lieutenants. So, you know, in a perfect world, what I need to start really advocating for is not just replacing the lieutenant when he retires this July, but we need to really look at a second lieutenant to do these administrative functions. These are extremely important, high liability areas that can't be delegated to a patrol officer or even a patrol sergeant at this point. So I know you all have your soft write printouts, so we can get into the, to the, our budget numbers and take a look at where we increased and where we landed at the end. Again, we went back to the table several times with the town administrator on where we could find savings. You know, there is not one area in our expense line that we could even find that would be appropriate. We're hemorrhaging right now to get to June 30th with this current budget. We're doing the best we can, but everything costs triple than it did a few years ago, and there's just not enough money. We're relying on the DPW, thankfully. We've got good people that work in this town that Director Field will lend to us to come fix our problems. Thankfully, the people in this room supported a new building. A lot of our money is still going into the building falling apart, so three years from now, that'll work itself out, but it's still something we have to deal with now. But in the end, we did reduce the budget by not filling a police officer position. We do have, Lieutenant Keith Newns is going to retire in this next fiscal, and we just won't replace him. We'll replace the position of lieutenant, but we won't replace the body. So that netted a $168,168 increase in our budget, which was 3.31 overall. And, you know, looking at the increases, they're driven by, all driven by collective bargaining agreements. You know, you'll see an increase in detectives, but what that is, is we just, I just assigned a new officer to detective. So that officer just shifted from our public safety payroll line to detective, so it looks like a 32% increase, but it's an existing officer that we shifted. A school resource officer salary increased. We were funding that with Opera Funds last year. Now we're not. Our animal control officer went up due to an increase in hours. Our career incentive line is increased due to several officers finishing their master's degree. A night differential went up, because a lot of the new officers that we did bring on are now working the midnight shift, so there is some bobsided night differential now, because we actually have an extra officer working that shift. So the $14,000 increase in our sick incentive, that's a collectively bargained obligation that we didn't fund for prior, that we have to now. You'll see it...
Just to be clear, we got rid of the sick.
Oh, we did. Yes, so we...
It's a fitness program.
Yes, we have a fitness program that replaced a prior sick incentive. Correct. You'll see a $19,600 increase, but it's truly not an increase. That's a shift that used to be in acquisition of new equipment that Wendy Nightengale and I moved and appropriately itemized it for the body camera, for our share. And that will be spread out over three years that we need to pay for it. And our consulting services, we're anticipating promotional examinations this year, and that's a placeholder. I did have a sergeant and deputy chief exam 18 months ago, and that was, you know, approximately $11,000. I just, I can only imagine it's going to be a higher fee now, so that is a placeholder for that. Really, everything else is governed by collective bargaining, and that's our budget. And I'm open to any questions.
Let's start on this side. The only question I had was, I didn't see it on here as a line item. I assume it's part of the IT department's budget, but storage for the body cameras.
So we made the... Smartest decision we could have made, and we bought the cloud storage package with Motorola, so we don't have to... It would have been six figures to store it, so it'd be unsustainable. So Motorola handles all the cloud storage. Yeah.
Thanks, sir.
Yep.
It's a tomorrow side. Over to your side. And thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Keith, when the body cameras are activated, and someone needs to go through the film, right? There's...
And that's time-sensitive as well, right? There's man-hours. In some departments, it's a full-time person that has to go comb... Without question, yeah. You know, Mansfield is just implementing them, Foxborough recently implemented. I don't know what Mansfield's plan is, I know Foxborough has, has someone dedicated to doing it, the redaction. Right now, it's the deputy chief, Leslie Buckley, and myself that are doing it. And depending on what it is, and if three or four officers were on the scene, we're watching four videos, so we could be watching video for four hours to, if I had mine on, I didn't bring it tonight, but if I had mine on, we're redacting all the faces in the crowd here that, to protect people, so it's extremely time-consuming, and so it falls on us.
If that's four hours on one incident, and four body cameras are on, then you guys are going through sixteen hours.
Sixteen hours worth of data, we're literally watching it in real time. Yeah, the deputy chief spent like this week doing it, which is probably why it's sick, right?
And to be, to be clear, and tie that, this is part of.
The broader conversation around unfunded mandates.
Right.
Because this video footage is subject to public records law, right? Which does not distinguish between asking for a copy of the budget that's on a website and will, although it took a tremendous amount of staff hours to produce, once it's there, it's there.
Right.
We don't need to go through and redact things. Same law applies to if somebody requests hours of potentially highly sensitive video footage from a police department, where you have to go through and redact a large amount of the, you know, folks who are not involved in the, in the incident. If you make a mistake on that, that could be a massive liability issue.
No question.
And under the records law, I think it's capped, the town clerk's not gonna care, but you are able to charge fees, but it's capped at twenty-five dollars an hour, regardless of what the hourly rate of people doing that work is. And so that's one of those things that, you know, we're not opposed to public records, we try to cut down on records request processing, we're just putting everything online.
Yeah.
You can't just have a live stream of the body camera, so that's, that's a huge amount of time and resources to manage that. It's a good program, it's good to have that for transparency, but it's, it's just another, as, as our work becomes more complex, the expectations on transparency are higher, and you don't have additional staff, let alone dealing with thirty percent increase in call volume.
Right.
It's, it's really a substantial hit on their bandwidth.
You know, and another thing, luckily, we don't have to redact for core purposes, but the court wants everything. So any criminal case we have, they want all the, and that's just another, it's cloud-based, so we have to log in through the Motorola portal. We still have to generate the data and then send it, and that, that takes time. So we can shy away from the redaction portion, but we still have to generate these records for discovery for court, and that takes time.
That's a real way to disincentivize communities from doing the body worn cameras.
Yeah, well, that's, just again, it's great to receive a grant for the hardware, but this is a, this is a soft, and maybe kind of pointed out, an unfunded mandate, that it's, and I've talked to folks from other departments where it is absolutely all-consuming for, and it's unplanned, right? They've now dedicated a full-time person to do this.
Right.
And that person's drowning. That person's been dipping into overtime to go through all this footage.
And we're trying to run a police department and do all of these good things and the things we have to do, and then this is just something else that we have to deal with, you know.
It's something I want the community to be aware of, that we're gonna have to deal with moving forward as well, as we look at the man-hours being spent doing this.
Just one follow-up, just as, as a leman, the request itself, the generation of the request for that, that's what determines the redaction.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Geez, I was like, that's, yeah, that's seven full-time positions otherwise, okay. Thank you.
Are there any questions, or do you wanna just comment your anecdote earlier about the work you do with Dave Fields and Chief Alexander? It, it really, on the select board, we see more of like those anecdotal stories about this relationship piece, and I just wanna, you know, call out how much the town benefits from that, and how much it really adds to what we're able to do, and it's a great example of like doing more with less, and there's so many examples of that that I've seen personally over the past three years. So that's a kind of, you know, relationship equals doing more, and it trickles through the entire, you know, three departments.
It's across the board, it's with the schools, it's with.
Oh, yeah.
It's with everybody. This is a, it's an amazing town, it's why I'm very proud to be raised here and stay here, I'm raising my son here. My son is in the pre-K program, so I'm, I'm one of those, I think, as I got a call.
You're part of the bubble.
So.
Well, the other great example is like the Health and Community Services work, which is an example of relationships allowing us to innovate in ways that when departments work in silos you can't do. And we're so lucky, because a lot of communities don't have that kind of interaction, and it really does put the script on what we can actually achieve. So I just wanted to give that shout-out, not just to you, but to all of our department heads and the schools and.
If I call them anytime, they're the first people there.
Yeah.
And I'd do the same for them.
No comment, thank you for all that you do, thank you for the presentation.
I've had the privilege recently, over the last six months, meeting a lot of your officers that do in details at the synagogue. We very much appreciate the support that you've given us, and when I stop by and see them sitting in the, in the parking lot, that makes everybody in my congregation feel very, very safe, and we appreciate that.
No, absolutely.
So just tying back to your first slide on your mission statement.
Integrity, compassion, and what is the third one that I'm forgetting?
Professionalism.
Professionalism. So we've been with, we've been together through some of the best times and the worst times, and the members of the community see you on their best day and their worst day also, but that professionalism, integrity, and compassion, really, I think we should underline that a few times, because it really does express what you and, and the rest of the police force do, whether it's working with little kids, older people, everybody in the middle. So I think knowing that we have a, a great force makes us all feel secure and comfortable.
We do, the future is bright, we have a great young corps of police officers that, you know, I looked at our roster before I came here, we have thirty-eight right now, twenty-eight live in town. We're having a baby boom right now, three of them just had babies, two on the way, another one coming soon. They're all gonna go to school here, they, they love this town, they grew up in the town. The other ten that don't live here, seven of them went through the school here, they just happened to move out, but we had, we got people that were living in this town that wanted to come work here, so they left their police departments to go and work here, because they, they see how good the town is, so. People with, with a lot of years on. It's hard when you have a years-on job to leave and start over, and they, and they did it, because, not because of me, because of everybody in this room, believe me. It's a great town.
Well, that's a great note to end this presentation on, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now Chief Alexander.
Our department's gonna bring us home. Can you actually bring us home? Do you have a fire truck here tonight?
I can operate it. I just, I have video of it.
We have it, it's all ideal, especially. For you to hear it all ride home.
Oh, absolutely. Always ready.
He said, he said Chief Alexander's gonna bring it home now, and then suggested that we go on the fire truck.
We'll bring the one that's on the screen up here, basically, ride home. The fire department budget starts on page eighty-two.
All right, good evening, everyone. Justin Alexander, Fire Chief.
John Carroll, Deputy Fire Chief.
Amazing Deputy Fire Chief for the record. I wouldn't be able to be here tonight with all of these facts and figures without him, so I wanna give him some credit where credit's due. So we're gonna take you through the budget, talk a little bit about how we're operating, what's going on, and the fire engine you see on your screen is our newest fire engine. Thank you to all of you for helping us get that. It's in service out of our Depot Street fire station. It's a great engine, and it's really helping the cause, because we have a couple others that are getting pretty tired, and it's really taking the load off of a couple of them, so we wanted to put that up there and show you, and thank you for that.
You're gonna have to bring that to one of our select board meetings when we're at Town Hall.
Absolutely.
The last time we got to see it, so it's really cool to see that.
Yeah, we'll bring it up, little field trip outside.
Yeah.
The weather's breaking, so that'll be a good time to do it. So I put this picture in here every year, I think it just reminds me of getting older as I see myself in this, in the center every year, getting a little bit older, but that's okay, because it's great to see the department. We do an annual swearing-in and awards night that we've partnered with our Chief Boone in the police department now, we do it together, it's a great event, the select board's been present for it. It's one of our things we really pride ourselves on, and we're recognizing the firefighter and paramedic of the year. That's one of the big awards, and our swearing-ins that we have, we'll have a couple this year for new hires and some promotions. So great night, some of our great successes that we have, it's a great morale boost, and really a chance to recognize ourselves, because we're not really good at it. We're, we're really good at helping people, but not actually talking to about what we do internally. So main part of what we do is we protect in order of people, property, and the environment. That's our mission, is we protect those in that order. We will do whatever we can to save people, and then we will do whatever is possible to save property, and then the environment as well. Those are all three of our, the edicts that we have to follow, and we do a really good job at that, and we train a lot on it. So we work through, you can see, I won't read the bullets on them, but we read through, you know, all the different areas we serve in. One of the things about the fire department has changed over the last fifty years or so is that, once upon a time, the fire department was just putting out fires, and it's grown to be so much more than that now. We do fires, and we have the ambulance, and we have hazardous materials, and we deal with, you know, Chief Boone was talking about the, you know, the, the health program, the public health program, public health program that we have in town, and we have one of our captains who was assigned to that, and working with Stephanie and Officer LaCount on that, and, and it's a really important piece of a modern progressive system, and it's not just about the fire department, or, or police, or HCS, it's a team effort. And I think that that's one of the big successes we've had in the last couple of years. One of the very first things I got to do before I was even sworn in was participate in the interview for the first person, Catherine Timbomosi, who is now deputy chief in Nantucket. We do miss him, but he really stood that program up, and it's been a success, and it will continue to be an annual success for us. So we're such a multi-discipline agency now, that the areas we go to, I always tell people that, when all else fails, who do you call? You call the fire department. We've been called for birds in a dryer van, and I can't shut my stove off, and.
Sorry.
Whatever it is, it will come, you know.
It wasn't me.
But when it's out, give us a call, we probably have somebody who can figure it out.
And you get walk-ins.
And we get walk-ins, absolutely, we definitely do. And, and we're very adaptable and we react, and, and that's, that's what we're about. So we put this on there every year, because we get to see it count up, we're proud that we've been formalized since eighteen ninety-four, and celebrating a hundred and thirty years of protecting Easton and its residents. Another fire, we do, one thing we're also very proud about is that we're one of the few departments that train twice a year in live fire training. It's part of our goal of reclassifying our ISO rating, so we're hopeful to classify in a couple of years from now as an ISO Class One, which is the best, and we're, we're hopeful to obtain that. And one of the requirements to do that is to have live fire training. So we're doing that, we're very fortunate to do that, it's near and dear to my heart, I'm a big training junkie when it comes to firefighting, and, you know, getting, taking the department right out, within a few months of us getting, starting together, we got the department into live fire training, which is what we needed to do, and it's starting to pay dividends, because our confidence has grown as a department, it's a very young department, as they get that confidence, our ability to mitigate emergencies grows, because they understand and recognize what they're facing, instead of having to take, not necessarily unsafe, but they don't have to be as conservative, because they understand where the risk line is, and that's what they get through these experiences. So where are we going? So we accomplished another record year of runs, four thousand two hundred and sixty-seven emergency runs, and another about two thousand non-emergency, with those sort of inspections and some public services that we do outside of those. So that's great, we, we've accomplished that without any major injuries, no major losses in the town, I'm not gonna, I'm not jinxing myself, because my phone's probably gonna start going off, but we, we had a great year when it comes to that, and we handled those emergencies with professionalism, and I'm very proud of the staff for what they did, because it's challenging. Easton, if you ask Semrec, Easton is known for their simultaneous calls more than other communities. For some reason, people must communicate telepathically, but they call nine-one-one at the same time for the fire department. And it's a real challenge when they stack two, three, four times in a row, within two or three, four minutes of each other, for us to take our staff and get to all of those at once. And we're really good at it, and when I came here a few years ago, I was amazed and impressed, and the people that work for this department know how to do it, so that's how we get it done. So one of the things that we want to take a look at is kind of a, a long look back, because, you know, I was talking, you know, through some communication with Mr. Reed about the, the, where we've gone as a department, run-wise. And one of the things to look at is the ambulance, it's, you know, seventy percent of what we do, seventy-five percent, I don't know how you look at the numbers, and what's really important to note is that when you take a real good look back in time, you know, go back to like two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty-three, we, we have that data, we've almost doubled our run volume since then, doubled it, and over, what, a thirteen-year period. So while that's a big number and a big percentage, what I think is important to look at is how we're doing it. So currently, we're running three fire stations, and one of the things I want to talk about tonight is explaining how we run them. And one of the things we talk about, people will ask you in the fire service, how many people are you running a shift, right? How many people work? How many firefighters are on shift? Well, we run eleven, we have eleven on paper, on the roster, but we don't run eleven. So the problem with that is, what is your minimum shift level? So what happens in a fire department is they'll drop from the eleven to a lower number to save cost, because when you don't have to backfill that overtime, there's a cost savings. So you can't say you're running eleven, you have to look at the minimum number, because if you take out all the hours, we have twenty-one thousand nine hundred and eight hours of time we can take off as a department. When you equate that out over a three-hundred-and-sixty-five-day calendar, that's about two-point-five people per day, every day, off, if they took it equally, which they don't, because you're not gonna have vacation on a lousy January day. They're gonna save that time until May, June, July, and the fall. So when we drop, we drop to eight, and we're at eight almost all the time. Occasionally, so the benefit of eleven drop to eight, or eleven dropping, I should say, because there's no benefit to going to eight, but dropping, is that we cut down on that overtime number, it really doesn't change the overall bottom line on the budget, but it changes the overtime number for one of two things. The general public looks at the overtime figures optically, and says, wow, you're spending a lot of money on overtime, right? So that's one perspective. The other side of that is, for every one of those overtime dollars a firefighter's working, and you can burn them out and create morale issues, and we don't want that either. Retention of firefighters is super important right now, because getting them is very hard. So it's a balancing act, and the, what we're doing now is good in the overall picture. The issue is, we drop to eight. And what that does is, when we drop to eight, we lose our officer in charge actually being the person in charge. They have to become a firefighter and not be the command officer anymore. They have to get in the fire engine, put their gear on, put their pack on, and go fight the fire and rescue somebody, and not be the person standing in the front yard, making sure everybody's being safe, and noticing the person that's in the window, because they're inside the house. Their job is, their captain's OIC, the officer in charge's job, is to make sure that everything is going smoothly, that we didn't miss something, that everybody's safe, that we rescue who we have to rescue, do our job, and everybody goes home safe to their families. When we're at eight, that doesn't happen. There's nobody outside, because the officer has to go in and do their job. Or at a car accident, they're the ones with the jaws of life, cutting the car open to get somebody out, not making, not standing back and making sure there's not a power line that's about to drop on everybody and hurt them. That's the officer's job. And when we're running record run volume, like we're doing, that is happening more and more, and it's just a risk that's super high, and there's no bigger priority for me, it's in my goals and objectives every year that I submit, than to move our minimum staffing to nine. And that's done through an increase in overtime, because what we're doing now in Easton is if you look at the chart against our core community staffing that's on the screen now, you'll see that we're number eight of nine in the core communities, as far as how many people we protect per firefighter. We're protecting three thousand one hundred and seventy-six people for every one firefighter on duty at our minimum staffing level. And when you compare a community like Canton, or even a much smaller population-wise, Foxborough or Dedham, you can see how those numbers drop. I mean, Dedham's protecting nineteen hundred and twenty for every firefighter. And we're also, with the exception of Marshfield, square-mileage-wise, significantly larger, covering a bigger area. So so many factors that come into what we're doing, and that goes to the points that were made earlier, that we're doing a lot with less, we're very lean but efficient, and we always get it done, and we always show up, but what we're doing is not optimal and not the safest. So I wanted to present tonight how my goal in presentation tonight is kind of setting the plate that we made some adjustments in the budget for our expenses around inflation, but the, the goal for the fire department, hands-down priority going forward, is to move to that nine-person minimum, to make sure we have that command and control and that span of control present. And you can see that our minimum staffing changed in two thousand and thirteen from seven to eight, and for the last ten years, it's been eight. And we've grown significantly, if you go back to that slide with the graph, you've seen how much busier we've gotten since then, but we still haven't stepped out and let our commanders actually command and be safe. So that's one of the big things, and then the tipping point that I'll conclude on this particular topic is, you can gauge our stress level, not in our physical stress, but the not in our physical stress, but the stress on our system as a department, by our need for mutual aid. And what's happening is when we made some staffing changes through some grants and some things just a few years back, we were, and then we were able to see mutual aid need go down. But what's happening is we're trending up. We're getting busier and we're needing mutual aid more. And that's a sign that our current staffing level is either treading water or being exceeded for what we can handle because we need mutual aid more often. So when you see we're at 1.7 in 2020 and 3.6 now, you can see that it's growing. And that trend, I don't anticipate going down short of run volume going down. So those are the big pieces. And then one to note financially is that we're letting about $125,000 a year in ambulance revenue go to our mutual aid partners because we can't get an ambulance to that call and we're using another community's ambulance and they're getting to bill for it. So while that doesn't create enough funds currently to hire enough people to staff a third ambulance, it's just a note that we're starting to spend, other communities are starting to get Easton revenue from that situation. This is just another picture of our live fire training. Some things that are really effective, we'll get into the budget shortly, is our, the mandates that we've been given for EMS training, especially, we'll really talk about our EMS equipment testing and other equipment testing and certification, because that's a big thing in our budget, with fire equipment as well. And then OSHA and our two-in-two-out rule. So there's a piece that's coming and OSHA's being reevaluated right now. And there's some things being pushed down that could really affect our legal requirements, not just best standards, that, for instance, just an example, the two-in-two-out rule states that you have to have two firefighters outside for every two you put inside from a safety standpoint. And if we're spending, sending two people from a Bay Road station to a fire and they're going to be out, be there for four or five minutes by themselves before anybody else gets there, are they supposed to stand in the front yard? Or are they supposed to go in without anybody else side and violate what could potentially be a legal requirement, regulatory legal requirement? Real tough position to be in and it's coming down. And I guarantee you, there'll be no funds to deal with it, unfortunately.
And I think that's an important note. OSHA standards began applying to Public Works when?
Three years ago.
And so this is, this certainly is not going to make anyone feel better. But OSHA standards largely did not apply, although there was some comparability through Department of Labor regs.
Yeah, the same standards applied through GLS, but the OSHA didn't have any enforcement.
Well, and now there's an additional layer of reporting requirements through HR, through Public Works. And then this is something that's been showing up in the Managers Association as well as major concern with certain regulations like this, again, as noble as they may be. There's no funding attached to it. It's, it puts you in a really borderline impossible situation.
Agreed. And it is impossible. As firefighters, if I was there by myself, I'm going to go in and try to save you. I'm going to put my gear on, I'm going to do what I got to do, whether I'm the fire chief or a brand-new firefighter. That's what we took the job for. But we get put in this position where afterwards, if something happens, we become liable, you know, who knows what happens? Do you lose a job? We don't want to put ourselves in that position. And that's what happens with these mandates without funding. Because we can't, if they're going to say, hey, two-in-two-out, we're going to give you half a million dollars for your budget to do it. Okay, we can make that work, but we know that's not coming. So just some interesting things there. We'll talk a little more about that in the budget, which we'll get to very shortly. I would be remiss if I didn't talk about our SERC team. I do every year. They're an amazing group. We just had their appreciation night last night at our Bay Road station. They're a great team. They do so much for us. This is them at one of our fires on Turnpike Street, helping us out. And they come to our fires and they give us fluid, Gatorades, and make sure we have what we need. And they bring a bus up in case it's cold out, like we had over the last winter, not this past one. So great team. And they're volunteers. So I know we're here to talk about budgets, but they're a piece of us that actually doesn't cost very little. We spend a little bit internally on our budget to take care of some things for them and cover for some of the costs of their meetings. But a huge resource and just a big thank you to them for what they do, because they are a big part of our agency. So just talk about the budget and wrap it up because I'm sure everybody wants to go home. So on our salary budget, no new positions. The increases are contractual. Our overtime accounts are generally level funded. From last year's number, we didn't change them, which it really equates to a loss of effectiveness because you're going to have those coalers that come in and make the overtime dollars that are there less effective in the long run. So, you know, that's consideration relative to the budget. And we're going to reduce a little bit of training to get the balance, the budget to balance out. The main changes that you'll see on your budget sheets under the salary lines, career incentive, we reduced that a significant amount because in the face of trying to work together to get the budget balanced, we took a different look at how we do the career incentive. We used to budget, that's like what people get paid for their college, that line, that's a college line. And we took that on, they have to report to us what they're going to get in the following year. And they report that in December for the entire fiscal year of the next year, which is a long way out. And quite often, some of them don't complete the classes and get the degrees or things that they say they're going to get, but we had budgeted for them. So now we took more of a historical average instead of what they tell us. So we can take it down a little bit. The downside is if they all decide to follow through, we could be short in that account. But we believe that's a safe area at this point to follow on. A little further down, a little reduction in training, that's just basically taking out of training, one of our training exercises that we pay firefighters to attend. Fire alarm, that's another one we could take out without any real effect, that $4,000, a little further down. We are shutting down our existing fire alarm system at the end of this year, calendar year, and going to more of a central station alarm system where your burglar alarm or your fire alarm ADT, if you will, is going to be transmitting the fire alarms. Because it's a very large expense to maintain the one we have. And it needs to be replaced and it's probably about $125,000 to replace it. And it really needs a full-time position to maintain it, which we don't have. So we're going down that road. It's a financially beneficial road in the long run. And it does take some liability off the town because we're not obligated to service those systems, whereas the falls kind of to the business owners that have them. The increase, the only real increase we see further down is for the specialty pay. That's for what Chief Boone was talking about earlier, the firefighters who aren't assigned a full-time job, but they, to fix something, let's say, but they get a little stipend to do it and they get overtime when they have to commit off duty to do it. That's what that is. And we supplement so much of what we do through these positions. We have a huge list of them. And a credit to the firefighters who are all willing to take on these little roles that add up to a big thing. And we have to add a few to try to deal with some of these, you know, really unfunded mandates. So we've tackled a few of them through these positions and it kind of saves us from having to add to our full-time administrative staff to deal with them. So we can focus on trying to get our minimum staffing up. That's our goal. So a little bit of an expense, but in the grand scheme, it's a savings. So that takes us through salary. Just a quick shot at what we look like in the department. So you'll see, one thing I did put an asterisk on is we did increase our FTEs in FY24. And that was where we went to 11, but we're dropping to eight. So we did that as the savings on the overtime and the burnout of our firefighters, but we didn't really increase our response ability. That doesn't say that there isn't a day here and there where we're at nine, 10, or even 11, because nobody just happened to take it off. But statistically, that is very rare. So we didn't gain much on that, but we gained on our firefighters' mental health and work demand and then those overtime line perceptions. A diagram of the fire department, or an org chart. So it just starts with me and then some administrative staff on the left. And then it breaks down into our maintenance, our fire prevention and MIH programs, and then the shifts. And we run four groups, for those who don't know. Four groups of firefighters on shift, those are the 11. Each one has a captain, a lieutenant, and the nine firefighters. And so that's how we run with that. The expense side, and we're bringing it home. We're almost there. So the expense side, a couple of changes. So what we did is we took, kind of like we did a wholesale look on the salary budget to figure out that we could hire these firefighters and reduce the overtime lines. We took that approach for FY25 with the expense budget and realized that there are some unfunded areas that we were kind of taking from other accounts and making them ineffective. They weren't really aligned. And also that some of them were being overspent that really belonged somewhere else in the budget. So we moved them around. So that's where you see some of the percentage changes. So I'll just run you through the changes and take questions here. So you'll see that we had a little bit extra in boilerplate and heating because that's just gone up. Vehicle maintenance has gone up for repair and maintenance to $2,000. That's mainly due to just the cost of equipment. Not so much that our equipment's breaking down more, but buying the repair parts and things that we need has just gone up. Ambulance billing, the ambulance is out more, so we need a little more in the ambulance billing area. We reduced communications, 8,520, because we realized that it's really just in the wrong bucket. So we were able to take that out and kind of reallocate that elsewhere. 5770 under medical supplies. We're just busier and things cost a lot more, especially in the medical supply world. It is very expensive these days in that world. And then the last one to close it out is you'll see some big changes under dues of membership and equipment and certification and licensing. So what we did is we discovered some things that needed to be tested and certified that really weren't budgeted, that weren't accounted for in their own area of the budget, and worked with, you know, Town Hall and Wendy Nightingale and Connor to get this to be more representative of what it costs per year for the fire department. So there is an increase, of course, in the overall budget, but we've also realigned some other accounts, which is why you see that absolute enormous percentage. But it's more of a realignment so that we can start charging the right things to that account, which is why you see what you see there. So overall, the budget went up 2.4%. That's down from about 3.56 of the initial request. And that is our budget. So take any questions?
Of course.
Anything on the finance budget?
I have one serious question and one, because it's now 20, quarter of 10. I'm getting a little loopy, so I got a loopy question, too. The first one is, do you have any sense, well, thank you, obviously, for the presentation to both you and Deputy Chief. Do you have any sense of why your runs are increasing? Is it a population aging? Is it just the growth of the population? Is more skateboarding injuries? Like, what's causing that kind of growth increase?
So it's a host of things. If I had to round out my top three, it would be growth, aging, and the post-pandemic threshold for the need for medical services.
Sure. That's fair.
So I would say those are where it is. Because we definitely get called for things we may not have got called for in the past, but we still treat it just like everything else we always do.
Certainly. And then when you and Chief Boone put out a joint statement, who decides whose name goes first? That's actually, it's actually from my children. My children had that one.
I would say that we try to one-up each other to always put the other person first.
Ah, it's not a game of rock, paper, scissors?
No, it's who can give credit to the other person first.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Justin, you mentioned in your presentation, you had $125,000 lost in revenue to ambulance services that got farmed over to mutual aid. And then you also mentioned right after that, that it didn't make sense to, it's not enough money to bring on a third ambulance. How much is enough money to bring on a third ambulance?
Well, going into a two-station system with a new building project, it changes the dynamic a little bit. So in three years, the threshold changes.
To be clear, the threshold becomes lower, right? I mean, if you have the two stations, you're able to allocate the same number of staff slightly more efficiently than what you're doing now.
Yes and no. So the problem, the problem is the way we would staff in a two-station system with 11 is the two extra firefighters who could staff the third ambulance are actually not in the same station. That's the problem. So 12 would be, and that means we'd be at 11, not nine. We'd have to be at 11 to even make it work theoretically. If one brought the ambulance and the other one kind of met them, not really how you operate. But at 12, you would be able to put two people extra, whether they're on the engine and they switch over to the third ambulance for the third call, you would be able to staff that with consistency. That's the, that's kind of the yes and no. That's the issue. We technically at 11 would have the two to staff it, but they're not in the same place. And if, the real problem is, when the third ambulance is needed, I'd say eight or nine times out of 10, we're already out on other calls, which is why the third ambulance is needed. So nobody's in the station to get the ambulance to begin with. So there's a lot of pieces there. Whereas if we were at 12, actually 12 bodies in the station, we could be out on all those medicals and probably still have two left in the station to staff either a fire engine or an ambulance for that third call. So I would say 12 is the number, but 12 on duty, not 12 dropping to nine. So there's a lot of pieces there. What dollar figure is that? A lot. Probably something along the order of what Chief Boone was saying. He's deficient on him compared to his comparable departments.
And did I, if I may, correct me wrong, because going from 11 to 12 is in, it sounds like it's one position, but it's not. It's four groups. So you've been setting aside any timeout, paid time off, IOD. You need a minimum, when you have a four-group department, of four full-time firefighters with their soft costs to go from 11 to 12.
And not to get to fire in the weeds this late in the night, but contractually, we would have to allow one more person off if we go to 12.
Unless we renegotiate it.
Well, yes, of course. But yeah, so right now, we can have at 11, three can be off at a time. At 12, it goes to four under the current contract, which creates an overtime cost. So it's expensive to go to 12. And stay at 12. So, thank you.
Anything else on the side?
Just wanted to also commiserate with you on the loss of Tim Timmomosi. The Finance Committee also feels that loss deeply.
Yes.
Mostly Patrick, though. He's out of captain jokes now.
Well, yeah. I know. Captain, captain. I used to joke with him about that, too. I was texting him the other day. He's doing well, so I'm sure I can speak for him and send his best. But he's adjusting well to life on Nantucket. It's tough.
He attended our last meeting and we spent probably the final five minutes watching him turn slowly crimson as we complimented him.
That sounds about right. Yeah, that sounds about right.
Thank you both.
I'm going to stand on Tim Timmomosi anyway. So with his obviously proposed salary now, and you're not filling that with another captain or you have, can you explain with his departure, what that's done to the budget?
Sure. So what ended up happening was, you know, being still in civil service, better or worse, we're in civil service. And when he left as a captain, we promoted the next person in line for captain, which is David Nicholson. So he's in that position. The delta between Captain Timmomosi's pay, because he was more tenured in the department, was about $8,000. So we were able to see that change in how we built the budget by reducing that line by $8,000. And we also took into account a couple of retirements we're anticipating as well.
Got it. So your man, Manning is not changing. We're still at, for 25 proposed?
Correct.
Still staying?
Yeah, the FTEs are exactly the same as they were in 24. It's just that position, the name in that position changed.
And another firefighter's come in to
Correct. Yeah, we just offered a very nice woman this morning a position. So we're excited and like to see her come through the process. So we're working, which leaves us one position to go. And the fire department's really kind of a unique animal because operating four groups with very distinct assignments, because nothing we could do by ourselves. If, anytime we're under the normal staffing model of 11, we incur the overtime cost. There's no savings to actually like reduce one shift to 10, because we're going to lose that in overtime because we're paying 1.5 times the salary to fill those spots, because that shift still gets three people off.
Right.
So you're still going to eat it. So it's actually more cost-effective to hire for the fire department in that aspect. So we're working hard to try to do that.
Great. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Plus one on the sentiment about losing Tim Timmomosi. He was fantastic. And my question was actually submitted to Jamie's and you did a great job explaining that. So thank you. And thank you for a great presentation. I really appreciate how innovative you are and you're always, you're both always thinking about ways to kind of, you know, bring new ideas in programming to what the fire department does and kind of build those partnerships. And it's a great advantage for us. So thank you.
Thank you.
I have no questions. Just thank you for all that you do.
Much appreciated.
I'm surprised that you didn't talk about your great proposal that we've been approving over the last year to increase the number of departments that come in and beg you for taking care of their equipment.
We are. We, that program is very alive and strong. And matter of fact, Mechanic Tim, he found out today he's got to replace an engine in a cushioned ambulance, which is a major undertaking. So, but we're going to get it done for them. And that just shows why the program's successful, because they're having us do it and nobody else. So yes, thank you for the plug on that. I appreciate that.
Very creative, very creative.
So people, property, and environment. I remembered all three this time.
Yes, you did.
I just want to say that you're also a group that sees people on sometimes their best, but mostly their worst day, right? And so I'm just going to, I know I've shared it with the board, but I'm going to say it again. Your team saved my husband's life and his cardiologist said that the only reason that he made it from Elm Street to Good Sam was because of the advanced life savings that your people, your paramedics did. And the medication, I can't even pronounce it, but whatever the medication was, that's not something that's typically carried on ambulances. And they couldn't believe Easton had it. So like right from their mouth, you truly saved his life. And I'm sure that's just one of hundreds of stories. But as somebody that's a consumer, you know, you can hear these things hypothetically, but until it actually happens to you and you realize the value of that, and then you're looking at these numbers and thinking like, how can we shave money off here and there? It's just awful. It really is. So we just have to keep trying to find new ways to be able to fix the revenue problem. As Dr. Cabral said, it's not a spending problem. It's definitely a revenue problem. So we're going to work hard to keep working as a team together to try to fix it.
Thank you. I'm glad we could be there. And the examples are many. And we had one just the other day where a cardiac arrest, the person on the way to the hospital woke up and knew where they were and knew what was going on. And it's just a tribute to the staff that they can take somebody who was, had no heartbeat, not breathing, and have them talking, you know, by the time they're not even at the hospital. So great, great work by all the staff. They just do an amazing job, you know, proud to be a part of them. to be a part of them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. If I could, I feel like Wendy, last night, when there's more others, you actually do have a couple things that you still need to review, because now it's time for voting, and if I could use the fire department as the culmination to drive a point home, one of the questions that sometimes comes up when we have really hard budget years like this, and I appreciate everyone's trying to be sensitive, and, you know, we're all, maybe not at 10 o'clock, speaking for myself, bright people, we can see the sustainability challenges with, you know, departments of the size having 1% or 2% increases. I think in my first year as town administrator, the fire department was eight fewer firefighters, did not have a deputy, and we made a tough call to go with the federal safer grant program, and we took an enormous amount of heat for that, no fire department, pun intended, because of a fair question of how can you, in a vacuum, right, if you're just being purely financially-oriented, you know, what are you thinking, chief, or what are you thinking, chair, hiring these positions with a grant, and in saying, we have three or four years to figure it out and absorb it, because the level of need is so large, and we did absorb those positions, right? And we've made it seven or eight years now, and that, you know, you can't imagine, with the challenges a department like EFT has now, had we said, well, you know what, in a vacuum, this is a tough call, so we're just gonna not do it, you know, you talk about the services that directly impact people's lives, public safety, public works, education, these are hard calls. And so I appreciate what you do, I appreciate what all the departments here do, everyone who presented tonight and last night, we had, I think, 20-something presentations, and so, in asking for one of the items on both the Finance Committee and Select Board's agenda, which is your recommendation, the Select Board's inclusion and both boards' recommendation on Article 6 for the May 20 of town meeting, which is the fiscal 25 operating budget, want to kind of close out here, reiterating what I opened with last night ahead of the departments, recognizing that we, and I think you heard it from every single one of the large departments tonight in one flavor or another, we have some real major challenges ahead as a community, but none of us are here to say the sky's falling overnight. You heard a lot of really great, some fun anecdotes about how everyone here tries to work together to do more than we really should probably expect to be able to do when you just kind of look at our per capita spend levels. We benefit a lot from that. We have amazing staff here, we're very fortunate, and we have good folks on our boards and good people who live here and who care about the staff. And so we're providing this kind of disproportionately high level of service compared to the financial inputs, really because of the caliber of people we have. And so, we do, we have some really hard choices to make. There were some great examples of successes these departments have all had, we've made a lot of progress, we've done some really important facilities, we've, you know, moved to full AK, we have made progress where we can. And what the budget proposal that we've all put forward provides the community is, you know, a year of breathing room. There are a lot of communities having really hard budget hearings. Right now, there are communities that are immediately resorting to layoffs, there are communities that have not built reserves to the standard we have, that are immediately resorting to overrides. And we, we do have a measured success here with this proposal, that thanks to some tough choices we've made over the years, we do have, we have breathing room for a year, for the community and for all of you folks to think about how and whether we're going to try to maintain this level of service moving forward. And so, I appreciate all the departments and everyone here spending along a few nights with us, but I'm happy to answer any final broader questions about the $109 million operating budget, if anyone has any, and if not, I would respectfully ask for your votes.
I think we've asked all the questions. So would you like to make your vote first to, or should we do a first include?
Actually, why don't you do it, because we're doing two, and then the two, the three others, right? Number two is the revolving fund.
So I went a little out of order of the agenda, because we just spent eight hours on the budget, so.
Thanks, Chief. Here's.
Yeah, I was like, I don't want to be rude.
It's okay. Article six, Article six is the operating budget, so I would ask from a Select Board to be willing, a motion to include and recommend, and a motion if the Finance Committee is willing in a position on the recommendation as well.
All right, can I get a motion to include and recommend Article six?
So move. Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb, all in favor? That's unanimous.
Finance Committee, can I get a motion to recommend Article six?
Motion.
Six. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
So, that was a lot, I will be super quick here. Capital budget, everyone has had this for a few days, it's on the website at easton.maj.us budget. We have a capital budget proposal for fiscal 25, it's associated with, I believe, it is Article seven, the warrant. We'll read this little slide, we have a well-established five-year capital improvement program for Easton, it's baked into the bylaws of the town, lays out certain standards, here they are, preevaluating the prioritization of the capital needs of all of our departments, inclusive of town and schools, based in a kind of descending order of priority based on life safety versus maintaining existing assets, taking advantage of opportunities. The five-year plan totals $54 million, or just shy of $55 million in capital needs, which is actually a substantial decrease from last year's five-year need of about $165 million. That's thanks to voters generously approving a debt exclusion last fall for the new police, fire, public works facilities, that represents a large liability, future liability that no longer is represented in the CIP. Of the five-year total, $14.3 million relates to fiscal 25, I'm proposing funding $11.4 million of that for the fiscal 25 capital budget article, $3.4 million of that, as you can see here, is the water division. $3.1 million will be general fund borrowing, and $335,000 will be funded from water surplus, remaining $600,000 will be from a combination of available funds. There is a variety of items that are requested in here, I'd be remiss not to particularly recognize, and it's not just because he's still in the room, Director Field, DPW has some of the largest fleet replacement needs, we are not able to sustainably fund those every year. A lot of deferred items are things like roadway improvement programs, we used to borrow a half million a year for that to supplement the level-funded state chapter 90 program, which with few exceptions has been funded at the same 2010 rate, losing 65% of its purchasing power for 15 years, and we began deferring that in 2016, or somewhere thereabouts, because we couldn't continue adding to the debt. Indefinitely, a large majority of the capital funding recommendations stems from three categories. There's a handful of larger borrowing authorizations, such as one of the multi-year school security improvements, as well as an ambulance replacement, those do not necessarily instantly come onto debt service, particularly with ambulances, leading to the second item that contributes to this. We still have major supply chain disruption, particularly with vehicle procurement, we are sometimes waiting two to three years from a purchase order to delivery. In order for us to sign a purchase order, we have to have an authorization from town meeting. The benefit of this is that if we're doing a borrowing authorization for a half-million-dollar ambulance, we don't actually go and bond that money until it's coming in and payment is due, but having that approval from town meeting lets us get that moving, so that doesn't actually have an immediate hit on debt service. And then finally, did you get through your, you said PFAS. I don't know why, I thought you somehow got through your presentation not talking about PFAS, but an enormous reason why the water capital plan is so substantial is PFAS. That has been the case for years, that will continue to be the case. More than half of the total capital budget I'm recommending of $5.89 million is directly attributable to PFAS water treatment. Here's what that looks like as far as what those amounts are in the total general and enterprise fund costs, and then as part of our GFOA budget book standards, we show not just what the principal amount we are requesting in the capital budget is, but what the incremental or marginal debt service cost impact is over each year into the future. I'll briefly touch on PFAS, because it's most of this graph. We just completed our treatment plants, $12 million of treatment plants, as well as 1, 2, and 3, to comply with the 2020 Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, PFAS 6 regulation, technically not an unfunded mandate. We thankfully have really great engineers and project managers in public works. While that was unfolding, Rich Tierney, who could be here tonight, was also working to help build the $15 million Red Mill Road iron and manganese, green sand filtration plant at wells 3, 5, and 7. There are single-digit PFAS, single-digit part-per-trillion readings of PFAS in some of those wells, which is not over the threshold of the state regulation, but when we designed and built that plant, we oversized it, because typically when a new regulation like this comes out, it doesn't stop there, it turns into a regulatory leapfrog, where over time it gets tighter and tighter and tighter. And so we built extra space into the Red Mill Road plant, which is primarily constructed to treat iron and manganese, anticipating a future either tightening of the state regulation or a federal regulation. The future is now, the US EPA published a national drinking water standard for PFAS of four parts per trillion, which is substantially more restrictive than the state's 20 parts per trillion, and so we have a $5 million proposal in the fiscal 25 capital plan. Thankfully, we funded design for PFAS filtration, I don't want to say at risk, because we had good reason to think this was coming, but we funded the design already, and so this is $5 million in construction to install ion exchange resin at Red Mill Road. $890,000 is a estimate of the potentially annual cost of replacing and recharging the media at what will be wells 1, 2, 4, and Red Mill Road. So for the unfunded PFAS mandate, we will spend $17 million. The good news is, because we got ahead of this so early, we got to work on this back in 2019, years ahead of there actually being any regulatory framework to compel us to do so, of which was sometimes rather uncomfortable, because this was one of those situations where a lot fewer schools were minimum aid in 2019, a lot fewer towns had PFAS until they had to test, and now if you read the papers and follow the news, and particularly with the US EPA standard, there will be thousands of water districts rushing to try to design and construct these plants. There are not unlimited engineers, project managers, and construction teams, there are not unlimited ion exchange resin manufacturers, although I'd imagine that's gonna be a pretty slammin' industry for the next 20 years. And so, we, we are, $17 million that voters here have been generous enough to approve, and that are coming through water rates, if folks see water rates increasing, this is largely what's driving it. Still actively involved in lawsuits against the manufacturers of these chemicals. Other communities that are just a few years behind where Easton is, they're still in design, they're looking at costs, there are communities nearby who are spending $40 million on treatment, there are some communities that have larger and more spread-out well systems that are looking at $75 to $100 million just for PFAS treatment. And so, that's not to say our costs have not been substantial, but I think it's just kind of one more example of, you know, having a great team here who is kind of willing to stare down what's gonna be a tough thing to do, but just getting at it right away has saved us probably millions. So we hope to learn more about potential settlement damages flowing from some of the national lawsuits, and we would offset, you know, some of those PFAS costs, but that's what's really driving capital this year. You all have the full plan, I'm happy to take questions on any item in it.
Just one for me, related to PFAS, so the $890 is an ongoing, the $890 for the filtration replacements would be ongoing, and then the $5 million for Red Mill, is that the last large-ish ticket item to be done in the whole system? Or is there still more coming?
Yes.
Yes, based on the current, so the benefit of, we, when we started, we were looking at granular activated carbon as filter media for wells 1, 2, and 4, that pivoted to ion exchange during construction, which is costlier, but it treats to a lower standard, it gets to basically non-detect.
Yeah.
I don't know why we can't say zero, but it's functionally zero, right?
Statistics.
So that, that will be the same targeted treatment media, I believe, for Red Mill Road, correct?
Yeah, so we have seven wells, three already have treatment, this'll treat the other three wells, and then we have one that's non-detect.
Okay.
So that is all the big things that we can foresee right now.
Right, so the rest, until something changes, the rest is now upkeep, so these $5 million asks are basically no longer after this one.
Related to PFAS, yes. Yes, I mean, there is the proportional cost of a building project for water, which I guess is a good example of that, the cost of the water division part of DPW is less money than PFAS.
Excellent. No, I wasn't in town when you made this decision, but kudos, the forethought was exemplary.
Anything else on the side? I just have one quick question of the future state, one of the future state items, which is the center school piece. Essentially, to sum up, due diligence on the site, et cetera, et cetera, the takeaway was that a method to improve the site itself is demolition, was that part of the due diligence? Because essentially, was there a process that said, if we knock this down, we have a better chance of attracting a buyer, or is that just a?
It's just the economics. The building is functionally, which is why we didn't renovate it, it's a tear down, right? It's not ADA compliant, it's not safe for reuse, there's asbestos, so any, any private, so town meeting authorized the town to, through a Select Board, do a sale for private redevelopment for recreational or community center civic-type uses.
Right.
Really, anyone who buys that site is likely going to need to demolish. And so, you can do that one of two ways, you can basically net it out of the proceeds, right? Or you can do it as the owner and try to make it a more attractive parcel for redevelopment. A lot has changed with construction financing since 2022 even, so we want to make sure we're positioning the town to have it be as sellable as possible. I want to make sure that we're noting, and I know you're seeing it, but I'm not recommending funding for that immediately, I'm flagging it there basically for transparency purposes that as part of our grant writing ask this spring, we have requested millions in various economic development and infrastructure grants, one of them is a state site preparedness grant that can contribute up to, I believe, a half million, and so we want to flag this there to show the state, I don't know if there's any grant people in the room from the state, that we're serious about, if that state money comes, you could then offset it with a local match and pay substantially less, get the site more prepared, and then you functionally net the financial benefit in a prospective sale.
Thank you.
That was a big discussion point at the town meeting, Patrick, the statement that stuck in my head is other people's money, right?
Right.
When we approved it, it was, let's use other people's money to let them do the demo if they want that spot, or, you know, take it off the price and then let them handle it.
Net loss.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a commercial.
Excuse me, anybody from the Select Board side?
No.
I want to ask for a five-minute recess before we move on to the voting.
Okay.
Okay. So we're gonna just take five.
Sure.
We're gonna wrap up these last couple of votes.
I don't even know how old it is. I'm definitely going.
So Article 2, to establish spending limits for revolving funds?
Yes, sorry, actually, can we go out of order and do the capital articles, since I was on.
Sure.
My notes were there. So the capital article in the warrant is reflective of what was just presented, it is Article.
Article 7.
Seven, thank you. If the board would be willing to attend a motion to include and recommend, I would ask for a recommendation from the Finance Committee as well.
All right, could I get a motion to include and recommend Article 7?
So move. Barger.
Second, Lamb.
That's Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous.
Finance Committee, can I have a motion to? Finance Committee, can I have a motion to recommend Article seven?
Motion. Napoli.
Second. Jenkins.
All those in favor? Joel?
What do we do next, Article five or two?
So Article two is the annual establishment of spending limits for revolving funds. This is a requirement every year. It establishes annual spending limit for revolving funds. Actual expenses can't exceed the balance of a fund, even if the expenditures are less. I think that I need to fix that explanation. So accepting my typo in the explanation, it sets the limit for what we could spend, even if revenues exceed that. Is that correct, Wendy, for a revolving fund?
So, yeah, what you can spend in a given fiscal year, you can never spend more than one of the balances in the fund.
And I don't believe there is any adjustment to these from the prior year.
No, two of them did go up.
Okay. Which ones? Not to quiz you at 10:30 at night.
While she's looking that up, can I just get clarification on that point? This is the approved expenditures. If the fund balance is less, then obviously we're not going to backfill that fund. But if the fund balance is more, you still can only spend to this limit.
Exactly.
Okay. Right. Yes, we can, yeah. Thank you. You did.
I was like, wait a minute. Did I just?
I think the Florida Health Betteries, I think it went up from like $5,000 to $10,000. DPA revolving, I think it went from $10,000, $15,000, $1,000. DPW road maintenance fund was $25,000, which seemed low, and so bumped that up to $50. And vehicle and equipment revolving fund was $50, and we just bumped that up to $75. And I believe that it's it. But then, you know, the reason for, with the DPW, I mean, prices have just gone up so much, and some of those funds have started to accumulate balances, so you just want to be able to leverage those funds to the extent possible if there's a need for it.
Sure.
All right. Do we get a motion to include and recommend Article two?
So move. Barger.
Second. Lamb.
Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous.
Motion to recommend Article two?
Motion. Napoli.
Second. Jenkins.
All those in favor? Thank you.
Okay. And Article five?
I believe we're going to ask for Article five to be tabled until your next meeting. Is that correct, Wendy?
Yes, supplemental part of budgets, yes.
Yes. We'll have a final request there. Your next meeting on May 6, I believe, is what it is, is the last night for Town Meeting Article Reviews. I think there's, that might be one of the only ones left.
Do we have to vote to table it, or can we just?
No.
Okay. So that is it. Thank you.
I have one question for Article five.
Sure.
What's the last date of print in the meeting warrant for Town Meeting?
I'm sorry.
Last date of print, the recommend, or what might have you? Do you need to add? I assume the fifth is?
Because they're going to have to vote it.
Has to be posted seven days in advance. Yes, you can, for something like that, I wouldn't, I mean, I guess, I need to review it with Wendy. If it's something substantial, perhaps we would ask for a special meeting, but I don't, do we reason to expect that?
Yeah, this is, this is a small, this is a small ask from the Fire Department for some matching funds.
Sure.
For grants, and I think that's probably going to be it for the jungle fund, but.
So, so a night of Town Meeting would probably be sufficient.
Yeah, just one. So just for everyone here, so that, just plan ahead to have a night of Town Meeting pre-meeting. So we'll do the usual, come in slightly early to just approve that one. We'll probably force Wendy to come hang out with us somewhere in the line school. Thank you.
All right. So thank you, everyone, for being here for our two nights. Welcome, Chris. Congratulations on your first go-around with this.
Thanks, I thank you.
And I will take a motion to adjourn.
So move. Barger.
Second. Lamb.
Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous.
And I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second. Jenkins.
All those in favor?